Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July Planning Commission meeting. If I could ask you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States to the Republican Party's demands on the nation under the delivery of justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will begin with roll call. Loon Shaw.
Present.
Brooke Musky, Suzanne Spahn, James Raff.
Here.
Stephen Maples.
Here.
Brad Logan present and I'm aware that Sarah Winger is going to be absent tonight. Okay, first order of business is circulation of the minutes and approval of the minutes. Anybody have comments from what they reviewed? Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion to approve seconded by them. Alright, so all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, tonight's agenda, so that, we have one, two, three, four, five, five items? One, two, three, four, five, I think, yes. Okay, first item on tonight is PLPC 2024 0010 for the Troy Savings Bank Music Hall project. They have one to come up, please.
That's hooked up here. Just got some thoughts.
Got the presentation loaded in here. Thank you for your patience on us starting a few minutes behind.
Bringing it up to this for all of us.
Just said something. You just seem to, I like the, the night sword combined. So. You go over here, smart bike, say. It could dominate, no.
So again, they're orange.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, getting out there. Give them a slew of years.
Great, sorry to share this meeting. Just pulling it up from the agenda here. Oh, you can line that in, gotcha. Alright. Can I join a computer audio?
You can join.
All the audio is separate, I don't, I don't want to.
Yeah, you don't want to have any audio, so if you want to leave it off or you want to join, just mute your, your sound.
There's so many things on the screen to navigate.
There we go.
Okay.
Yes, alright.
Think we're ready? Is everyone ready?
Yes.
Hello, welcome back. Thank you, Roddy, and council members, thank you very much, really appreciate it. Thank you for having us back in front of the commission to share with you updates on the Troy Music Hub Expansion Project. I'll give a quick project recap, but first, my name is Dash Christner, Architectural Designer at Architecture Plus. Joined here tonight by Steve Curvin, my colleague, as well as Lisa McCorkle, our Landscape Architect. And all together, we proudly represent John Elbaum, Stacy Bridge, and Leslyn Chu from the Troy Music Hub, I'm sorry, Troy Music Hall Corporation and Foundation. And here's our project, so just a little recap, there are still three site scope items that are critical tonight. The first one being the Plaza on Second Street, the second being HVAC rooftop equipment that is most visible from Franklin Alley, and third is the parking lot upgrades. So I'll get into all the details and all the updates of those, but before we begin, are there any other comments, grievances, or potential conflicts of interest to, to share tonight before we dive in?
No, our one commissioner is not, is absent tonight.
Super, alright. Alright, site scope item number one, it's the Music Hub Plaza. We did have a survey completed a few months ago, so now we can, once that load, there we go. We do have a better understanding, of course, of where the lot lines lay. These are the existing conditions of the Plaza, as many of you are familiar. A little update, the Belgian blocks that create the edging from the Plaza space to the sidewalk are intended to remain, I'd previously said in March that we will remove those, those will remain. The cobblestones, as you see there in the photograph, will be repurposed to create landscape edging, which you'll see drawn in a slide or two away from here. There are two existing dogwood trees that we did have a licensed arborist assess. They are in good health, not great, so there are some tree protective measures that are in place from our Landscape Architect, as well as that licensed arborist to keep those trees healthy and in good condition for our, the new project.
Hey Dash, was, was that Jack McGuy, by the way?
Yes, it was.
And just you brought conflicts, and was it Jack as an individual or Jack under the More Trees Arborist Collective?
More Trees.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So Rick, my, I'm a owner of More Trees Arborist Collective, did not know that Dash and Jack, I didn't know that it was a More Trees project or job, but it sounds like he consulted a co-owner of the company that I own for a small part of this project.
Own the company?
Bring your mic over to you.
Yeah, so we, it's a co-lobberly owned company, it's, we have six owners, so I own like, I don't know, seven, what's the math, seventeen percent of the company or something like that.
Is it, is it a for-profit company?
Yes.
It's a for-profit company?
Yeah.
And what was the nature of the consultation?
There are two existing dogwood trees in the courtyard, we just wanted their health assessed to make sure that they were in fact worth saving and protecting for the project. So Jack McGuy came on site, looked at them, took some notes, and produced a report that we will enclose in the construction documents to protect these trees.
And I, I don't see any conflict that, that, now that you've disclosed it, it's not material to, to any decision that you have to make here, in respect to that.
I just wanted to discuss, thank you.
Good, thank you. Thank you, James.
Alright, so this first image, this first render that you're seeing here is of the courtyard, of course. All renders in this presentation are process sketches, if you will, they're not to be taken literally for every single object, that's what the site plans are for, meaning that changes occur in this project that were reflected in the drawings that may not have made it into the render, so just wanted to share that full disclosure. So the intent of the Plaza improvements or upgrades is to widen the hardscape space to improve accessibility and area for the Music Hub Music Hall to have outdoor performances, summer, some programming, which they already do to the space in the summers, but this will make it much more easy to allow for those performances to happen. Cueing for events is also a good use for the space, perhaps an intermission on a nice evening, guests and patrons could also stay out here. I'm asked from the staff report to provide more lighting information, so this first product you're seeing is a lit ballard that is displayed here, if you look closely, there are four of them at each corner of that main plinth. So just a way to, to intimately light that space without being intrusive or, or provide any light trespass to nearby residents, but to safely light the space. Some additional lighting info here, I can zoom in on later. We do have a small sconce, an up-down sconce on the facade of the annex building at that first level. Again, you can see three of them shown here on that first floor. So we will be removing the existing hardscape while protecting those dogwoods, as I mentioned. The existing sign out front that typically has tabloid eleven by seventeen posters is scheduled to be removed as well and replaced. We'll, we'll discuss signage throughout this presentation, given that those were the majority of the staff comments for this. So again, here's the site plan for the yard space showing four ballards, the increased paving space while still keeping generous green space on either side of the Plaza. Any questions about site scope item number one, the Plaza on Second Street, before I jump to the HVAC rooftop equipment?
Right for me, thank you.
Cool. Alright, site scope two. This drawing shows the structural doneage to support the rooftop equipment on the annex roof, also to minimize vibration, that doneage is necessary, it's the kind of first line of defense to protect the acoustic magic of the hall from the vibration of this rooftop equipment. This is a mechanical drawing, the uppermost drawing in the corner, I'll try to zoom to, but I don't want to, don't want to miss anything else up. Let's see if I can do this here, oh, no, just gonna leave it right there. So we are showing a cooling tower, its highest most point would be at eleven feet. There is another rooftop air handling unit, as well as a piece of ducting that runs vertically on the northernmost facade of the Music Hall. That is the, that vertical channel ducting is the only visible piece of mechanical equipment that our, that our model shows, and I'll show that right here. So we modeled out all the volumes, all the massing for the ductwork as drawn by our mechanical engineer. And if you see on the top right image, or really both images on the top, that little yellow vertical is the only piece that we expect for this model, for our specific dimensions received from the mechanical engineer, that would be visible approximately from the bocas side of Second Street. So minimal visibility, we have received comments previously from yourselves, as well as the Historical Review Commission, to provide an architectural metal enclosure. We don't feel our positions, that we don't feel that that is necessary, we feel that it would actually create a greater volume, greater mass to the visual components of the space of the, of the rooftop. On its own, the, the metal itself could be painted, and that was a recommendation from the HRC was to paint, at least on Franklin Alley, paint the ducting the color of brick to match the building. We would, were happy to provide paint on the rest of the ducting that is on top of the annex. So that, that's our position on the architectural metal enclosure at this point. We are also providing the rooftop equipment not on a principal, excuse me, not on a principal facade and as far back from the right of way as possible. So again, just making it as, as little visibility as, as humanly possible, while still allowing the equipment to do its job and bring air conditioning into the Music Hall to allow for summer programming, which is such a critical opportunity for revenue for the Music Hall. Any questions about the rooftop HVAC upgrades before I jump to site scope number three?
Did you have one, James?
That's okay, I'll, I'll say.
Okay.
All good. Okay, site scope three, parking lot upgrades. Again, we got that survey accomplished, so we can better understand what is currently on the site. Existing conditions, I think we've all walked, we know what it looks like, how it feels, it's a lot of pavement, it's completely pavement. We're increasing the green space by twenty-two hundred square feet, while also increasing the total parking lot spaces by one, existing is twenty-six, we have twenty-seven. If you are standing at the intersection of Second and State and you're looking south, you can see this nice, like, greenway effect of the trees on either side. If you look down state, that same nice green space, greenway effect is not quite as successful. So we'd like to bring eight total trees to the parking lot, you'll see that in the plan in a moment. Those were requirements by the city code and also just a nice thing to bring to the space. And that'll create a better connection between the parking lot side and the Music Hall side of the, of the road. Again, these renders are completely conceptual process sketches, so if you see something here, I, I'd be happy to explain it, but it'll throw the site plan, specific components, but this is close enough to show you all the kind of environment that is created in this corner. We are showing a, a large kiosk sign there, same exact corner, same location as the existing sign today. I believe it was formerly used to show the temperature, the time of day. So that was technically an electronic message center, which is something we are pursuing to the ZBA soon, very, very soon. And that was a comment again of the, the city staff report. Some more views here, showing the bike racks. Some of that green space, some of the trees. Our third and final lighting element, lighting products that we were asked to share information on is the street lamp. This is very typical, it's very similar to the product used in front of files or ACE. So since it's so close to that site, it seemed like logical to, to match as closely as possible. Some more lighting information, I'd be happy to zoom in on later. All the asphalt and pavement would be removed, as well as the sign, and one thing that we said in March is that we were at the time hoping to repurpose the concrete wall there, a three-foot-high knee wall. Patching and repairing and painting is as needed. We looked into that a little bit closer with our construction manager, Duncan Cowell. It didn't seem feasible or really worth all the trouble and expense to repair that wall, so we are now proposing a full decorative metal enclosure to mimic the fence across the street by the Music Hall areaway along State Street. So that, that is a revision that you'll see in the site plan.
Could you pause on that topic?
Yeah.
One of the renderings that looks towards the northeast from Second shows some of that fencing, but I still see some of the knee wall, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding the fence location, right?
Yes, exactly, so, so as I mentioned, if you see the concrete wall in the render, that, we weren't able to make that change in the renders, we did in the site plan, so we'll, I'll, I'll go through that and zoom in on the plan, but yes, so seeing a little bit of both, a little bit of metal, a little bit of concrete, that is no longer the intention, but certainly snuck into these renders, so good, good question.
Can you go back a couple more renderings?
Sure.
Yeah, that one. So anywhere the knee wall is shown, it would be the, the same wrought iron or?
Correct.
Cast fencing?
Yes.
Exactly.
Some site details, again, I'd be happy to reference as needed. And the, the final, the final item, I really want to zoom in on this, but I'm afraid it'll take my control away. Let me see what I can do here. Bear with me, I'm almost there. That's close enough. Okay, I'll stay there, how's that? Okay, so as mentioned, we're increasing the green space by well over two thousand square feet, I have it here. Two thousand four hundred and sixty-two square feet of increased green space from zero previously. Twenty-seven total parking spaces, that does include twenty-three, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-three standard and compact spaces, two truck spaces and two handicap spaces totaling twenty-seven. The compact spaces, the nine compact spaces are all on the southern edge of this plan, along the mural side. While the rest are, are standard-sized stalls. Any questions while we're staring at the plan? So I don't have to zoom in now?
Yes. I forgot if you're providing a new sidewalk, new concrete, is that part of your?
It, it is not, we, we are, well, we are working completely within the bounds of the property. Good point, though, if you see, trying to scroll just a little bit. There is an existing curb cut, thirty-seven feet wide, flush with the street. We, in the March submission, our exit aisle would have gone over the curb a bit, so we adjusted that so that patrons and guests and staff can all leave straight ahead onto State Street and make their turn safely without hitting a curb on the right two wheels of their vehicle. So that, that is our.
ADA, that ADA ramps must be existing, the corner with tactile.
Correct, all, all the sidewalk is existing, we wouldn't impact that, and part of, another part of the reason we aligned the, the exit aisle, other than to just make it a safe and logical space, was to avoid any impact on the sidewalk. If we moved any closer to the east, any work in the parking lot likely would have impacted some existing utility grates, we're not sure exactly what their use is for, stormwater or, or something similar, we didn't want to intrude on that in any way, so moving away from it was, was wise. Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Has fire department reviewed this plan, Eric? No comments, I didn't see any in the staff report?
No, they're, they're, they're fine with it.
Okay.
There is occasional puddling issues in the existing lot, and our civil team, Landscape Architecture Team have assured us that the drainage would improve and hopefully eliminate all of the puddling concerns.
Yeah, it seems like there's no catch basin, so the idea is just to flow out to the street?
Correct.
It'll be graded that way.
I've got just a quick question on setbacks, is it, is it your understanding that this complies with the downtown zoning? That the, the setback for parking areas?
Oh, the four-foot green space setback from the lot line? I, I have, so part of our calculation here, again, I'll carefully zoom in. But if I understand you correctly, you were speaking to the landscaping strip? Landscaping strip must be provided on the property between the parking lot or access drive, excuse me, and a public right-of-way. The landscape strip may not include any paved area except pedestrian sidewalks or trails that cross the landscape strip. Yes. Provide a minimum four feet wide landscape strip between the right-of-way line and the parking. So we've, we've accomplished that on, on all sides.
That, that's, that's awesome, there's, and I appreciate all of that, I'm, I'm actually getting towards the, the, it, under the downtown one zoning, there's the accessory use and structures and parking zone that talks about a thirty-foot setback. This is where it's like, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not exactly sure what the exact interpretation is, but if that is, if this is in compliance or, or is not in compliance with that specific section, I'm just understanding what your understanding is.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not particularly familiar with that section, is that, could I, do you have that?
Yeah, it's on the, yeah, the downtown one.
Two eighty-five thirty-nine.
That, that downtown one in development intensity zone.
It's sixty-four of one eighty-six and in the zoning.
Yes. Because I'm not entirely sure what the intent there, but it feels like was something we should just make sure that we're.
Got it. So then, just to be clear, your interpretation, a thirty-foot setback is needed from all, all frontages, all sides of the lot?
I think that's one interpretation someone can make here.
Gotcha.
Obviously, like, ZBA would have to be the ones who make the final call, but whether or not you even need to go to ZBA's is like the part where I'm like not entirely sure.
Right.
So the issue is specifically, the section we're looking at is titled accessory uses slash structures and parking zone. And I think the confusion comes from whether the setback would refer to a, a structure, an accessory structure or, or the actual parking zone.
Right.
Given that it's a, and the, the way it's depicted visually, to me, it looks more like a setback to a structure than a, than a parking space.
And, and probably, I mean, I'd be curious to hear an interpret, another interpretation, probably not applicable for site plan changes to the existing parking lot.
Yeah, the city, city staff view this as a modification to an existing parkings, parking lot.
Yeah.
Right, and the entire thing is a modification to an existing.
Basically grandfather.
Yeah, right.
Great, good, thank you. Alright, I think it's also worth mentioning that the parking lot, similar to the Plaza, will be used for, again, the outdoor programming as, as the owner would like to do so. It's, it's a nice, nice large space, I'm not sure exactly where we would set up a performance space, but it's certainly versatile now with the hardscape paving as well as the green space, so power would come to the parking lot, obviously for the sign. So again, the, the Music Hall client would like to use the space for summer programming, outdoor programming as needed. So another way just to activate the space, which was a comment made in March.
Power to the parking lot.
Yes, exactly.
Um, can you zoom in or scroll over to the alley side, scrub that, that's some storage for other, other vehicles, not, right, they're separated?
These two, so these two are the box truck spaces we've accounted for. It allows for staff to bring in large equipment, platforms for stages and what have you, as well as performers to bring in large equipment.
So they'd like to load it, so at the Music Hall and then park it?
Right, I, I believe so, yeah.
Is that space currently there?
There that? It's the, currently the exit of the drive-through. And it's our understanding there is an easement here, you can kind of see grayed out from the survey underneath. This grayed out space is the, the end of that, that drive-through, and there, there is an easement on file for that.
And so I guess where my mind goes is currently the way it functions or, or trucks basically stage over at the Music Hall is they'll park on State right adjacent to the building, is the idea that now they can move off the street and park in this space?
Oh, depending on the, on the size of the vehicle, they, they certainly could, and, and also how large and, and heavy the equipment is, if they need to be as close as possible, I think the space on State Street is appropriate, and then, once the truck is empty and has served its purpose, perhaps it could be parked here long term or short term for the event. Yeah, that's, that's my understanding, but of course, some of the larger events, orchestras and such, with the charter bus, that would have to remain.
Okay.
We've got just two quick things. With the, the plans to reduce that entrance at the north end, is there consideration of reducing that curb cut somewhat? is there consideration of reducing that curb cut somewhat?
Reducing the existing 37 foot curb cut?
Is that, is that something that y'all have looked at, possibility?
It's, it's not our intention to modify in any way. We, we've adjusted our exit aisle to use it as is. So are, are you referring to bringing that western side in, so it's not as, not as long? It's not our intention. We didn't plan for it. We don't think it's necessary, but I, I understand the question.
Right, right.
I, I was thinking the same thing, and so I think it would be a great, I, I think another thing on the top of my mind that's in a similar category, and you've sort of addressed it, is, is what Warren was pointing out about the lack of ADA accessible curb ramps. So, you know, especially that there is activity crossing the street on both sides of the street. So I think that, that's a really glaring one, and, and this kind of falls into a similar category. Obviously not quite as big of an accessibility issue, but could be addressed whether it was actually reducing the curb cut or installing bollards to prevent parking on the sidewalk or, you know, locating some of the street trees there or something else that would, you know, reduce the, the use of that curb cut in the way that it could be used now.
Gotcha. Thinking about those like pedestrian circulation issues and safety.
Definitely. Yeah, we'll consider that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And then the last thing I have about this site is, have we, have you considered the necessity for wheel stops?
Not at this time, but we, we certainly can. Is there a particular area in which you would imagine it necessary? We, we have curbing, the thicker white line along the edges is all granite curbing.
Well, my most, the place of most concern is that middle aisle where there's, it's sort of floating and thinking about pedestrians navigating. And if, if there are, if there's not necessarily something to help guide that process. I, I recognize that, like, some of the benefits is that it could be entered from either way. However, keeping that organized, I wouldn't necessarily say I would think it's the most urgent matter, but just maybe some thought into like, if there was something to do there.
Right, right. Our, our intention is that the alignment of those three green space aisles, if you will, in the middle creates an implied path so that pedestrians can walk from the sidewalk and head down to their vehicle or across the lot safely. So that, yeah, those middle three would create a safe path of some sort.
So you're saying you're intending for folks to travel that path?
Not explicitly. I mean, it's, it's not a path with paving or even striping to, to suggest it, but the alignment of the green space does create an invitation to do so. But if you suggest something more specific and.
Well, yeah, I guess my, sort of my response would be if, if you, if there's an intention for that, then I, I would recommend putting some sort of crossings or, or if it's, even if it's just paint or pavers or something of the nature, when there's not an intention for people to use that, then, you know, having that be planted and especially, you know, something a little bit more substantial to not have folks walk on it, then that would be, you know, it's, it's sort of like what we're trying to achieve here, you know?
I, I would add to that too, in that the pedestrian circulation at the parking lot is unclear in general. So are, it seems like the intention is for folks to use the ADA loading and unloading stall to head north to the music hall?
Yep.
And I, I think you could also try to invite people to go, if they're on the southernmost parking spaces, they could go west out onto the sidewalk first, but right now it seems like, you know, that's only designed for driving. Right? So you could add, you know, add something there to make that more explicit.
So additional pedestrian exits at this northern edge, kind of breaks in the fence?
Well, I, I mean, that's another thought. And that, you know, not, not to throw two, two different, well, it's, there are two different things that you. One of the things that jumped out earlier in the presentation is the, the removal of the knee wall and replacing it with the fencing. And I think that is a big loss for the neighborhood and folks who are walking in this area and people who are using the music hall for guests, because there are so few places to sit outside and rest, especially for older folks or people who just struggle to travel longer distances. So I think that corner has sort of been a, a space where people have traditionally done that for a long time. And I think especially at the corner, it should remain a knee wall that people can sit on and, and, you know, potentially step over, or I've seen like kids jump up on it and, you know, act like human beings, and I think that is nice to have in a city. But I was saying for the additional exit, it could be on Second Street, closer to the, to the south end of the site. Just, you know, maybe that means that, that tree on the other, you know, maybe the tree on the north side of the entrance is moved up slightly, and there's a path, you know, a clear path, explicit invitation to a lot, you know, get people in and out. Because, yeah, the way Stephen was, was kind of going through it, or you, you guys were both going through it, is it's unclear still, you know?
In other words, I think you, you have options, design options, but whichever way you go, let it just make us, make it a little bit more evident with that. That's what, just, we are charged with making sure that, you know, pedestrian circulation is, is safe, so.
So I'd just like to jump in, just be, I want to confuse it a little bit. I think the knee walls are pretty ugly and the fence is much better. And if you want to have a place to sit, you should put benches along the street. I think that invites good sitting, not on a wall, that's not necessarily comfortable, and still creates the sort of appearance and, and look that you'd want for a parking lot that is a little bit of a park right across from the musical. So I, I try to accomplish both of those by not having the knee walls.
Yeah.
I think it's really kind of ugly. Geez, I don't know what's.
That would be fine with me. I, I think benches are an obvious invitation to sit, and I think that's fine. I think the sidewalk is also quite wide in this area, so unlike most places in Troy, you could actually bench there comfortably. Yeah.
Stretch it around the whole perimeter and truly make it an inviting spot. Your lighting will invite people to sit there, the trees will invite people to sit there. It'd be just great.
Mr. Chairman, great.
This is just personal.
Thank you.
I, I was wondering, is there, what's the width of the site there? Do you recall?
It's, it's 20 feet from the face of the music hall to the edge, and that's just the, the corner just above. I, I believe this would be similar. If I could zoom in carefully, I could measure it a little bit, but it's, it's approximately 20 or less, 18 to 20 or so.
I'm wondering if, I, I assume, yeah, I'm sorry, can you hear me okay? Sorry. What I wanted to ask is, is there room in some of the, is the site so darn tight?
Yes.
Maybe as part of the project, you could explore putting some, you know, we, we put some new benches, and I hate to use this analogy, but up at the water plant, we put some brand new benches up there. And they would, that style that we have up there, I hate to use that as analogy, that's what, but they would be perfect along your, your, shall I say, the Second Street side. And it probably wouldn't have hurt to take a quick look at what we did at the water plant. Because I, I love the idea of having some kind of place to sit. And I, I don't think the city would have a problem with, you know, as part of the project, you installed some benches and, but you, you know, the site proper is so darn tight.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Russ, on Second, the sidewalk is 13 foot eight. And on, what is that state? It is, sorry, one second, I'm measuring. It's 13 foot two.
Okay, okay.
Either way, funnier, funnier benches.
Yeah, yeah. Take a look at what we. Of course, of course, you got to hold it down pretty well. We didn't do that. You could walk off with one of the ones we put up at the water plant.
Yeah. Dash, so question about, or as pertains to pedestrian circulation out of the lot to the west, the vehicular entrance off of Second that's 12 foot wide there?
Yes.
Is that, that's the existing?
Correct.
Is that the same width as it is now?
Yes, it is.
The reason I'm asking is, you could maybe even build in a protected, like, so there's a gate access there, and it's kind of awkward for pedestrians to walk around it. Sometimes I've seen entrances like this where they create a space, just pedestrian width, walking width past that. And you can bollard it off or do something to kind of designate it as pedestrian space. That's, there's a specific way you can kind of do it. And then as for the ADA exit, I think to me that, that reads pretty well as, as an exit. I just hope, it's not wide enough, right? It's nine feet. We've just got to make sure vehicles also don't use it mistakenly as an exit.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you for your recommendation.
All right. So this may be a question for council. As for the curb cut, the existing curb cut, if the commission took the position that that needed to be narrowed, would that need to be directed to the applicant or to city engineering? Any ramp in the city roadway like that would have to go, the city engineer would have to approve that. Okay, you just can't construct anything or deconstruct anything without approval from the city engineer. That can leave it. I guess I'm coming at it specifically from a responsibility standpoint. Who owns the cost of doing it?
Yeah, let me, let me share a thought there. In this particular case, we do have, we have a wide curb cut there. Now, this, this exit is really going to define how those vehicles come out. They're not going to be using that entire curb cut. I, right now, sitting here, I'd be inclined to not disturb that, but allow the exit to define how the vehicles come. I would also like to see if that, if this portion of, of State Street is part of our paving program. But I don't think I would be inclined to manipulate the, the curb cut in this instance. I would probably leave that be. Pardon? I would not recommend manipulating or reducing the curb cut, honestly. I would leave that as it is, because that, that exit is now defining traffic movements. It's now defining the exit.
Russ, as much as I would love to keep moving on, why, why wouldn't we make it better than it is now if it's bad?
Well, is that, is that curb cut bad?
Yes, it's bad.
Tell me why it's bad.
Because it's excessively wide and allows people to take the, the turn way more quickly than they ought to. And so you're right in that this exit does discourage that, but it is still more inviting. And it also does invite people to park on the sidewalk.
It also pertains to pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk too.
Let's go listen on it. It's, it's just simply, you know, there's a reason we don't have purpose like that.
Let me, let me tell you my experience. My experience, this is a small parking lot. It's a small parking lot. These turning movements are extremely limited.
Sure.
Now, if the board insists on having that, that's something that the applicant will, will pay for as part of the project. But my experience in this type of thing, this is a very small parking area. I think the turning movements are not going to be excessive, because, because it's a, it's just a single exit. No one's coming in.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good point. I just think that overall, when applicants are coming in front of the planning commission, and it, it is a good practice to ask them to make improvements to the city right away, especially when those, the existing conditions are likely due to their, their prior use. So this area that's been used for a parking lot for as long as I've been in charge for, for decades for the music hall directly, now it's going to continue to be used by the music hall and be improved by them. And so I think, you know, it's relevant improvement.
I would also just jump in very quickly that the, it, it will also produce a situation where it's unclear exactly how parking is supposed to work. So there's a curb cut there, it's not in use, without some other indication, like bollards or something else sort of defining that space, and it's, it's not clear exactly what that space would be. And, and again, I think our chief concern here is pedestrians, and it, that, that could be something of a not entirely safe scenario.
My, my, my thinking is, the board's welcome to, to make that modification. I don't think it would be a negative impact in any way to make that recommendation. I personally didn't think it was warranted, only because, only because of the limited available traffic movements. There's, bear in mind, along Broadway, people are headed in an easterly direction. It's only one way. In looking at a photograph of that, Eric was able to put up, pull up a photograph and coming out of there, exiting in that manner. Are you able to, Eric, are you able to share that photograph?
So just to be clear, on State Street, traffic is only going right? And that's an exit only, correct?
Correct.
So we're not worried about incoming vehicle access off of State Street into the lot?
Just exit north, turn right.
So the westerly extension of the curb cut does not serve access to the site?
Sure.
So it doesn't help with turning radius or maneuverability?
Yeah, and to be clear, I don't, I don't think that this is a, I, I surely hope it's not a life or death design decision. I just, I think it is appropriate to fix it. And we've clearly established that it's not required by the, by the applicant, but I think it makes sense to ask the applicant to make it better.
And maybe the applicant would look at that and say, we want to make it in the safest way, and let's see how, how to do it. So that, that's just a thought, you know, you hope for the best.
Let's keep moving. We have a long agenda.
I, I will say just one final thing, that luckily there are no visible utilities on the westerly side, so we would be filling the area. It's to the east where there's the grates that we don't want to touch.
Correct.
If, if that's the recommendation, seems like it wouldn't disturb too much. But that's, that's for us to discuss with our client and decide how to proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think we'll move on from that. I just want to stress that, you know, any, any work in the city right away will have to be approved by the city engineer.
Absolutely.
Whatever your plan would be, whether it be to raise the granite or, as you said, fill it, I don't know what that means.
Fill it isn't just level with the rest of the sidewalk surface.
Yeah, with what material and things like that, that's all very, I mean, I think the city engineer would have to pass on that, okay?
Of course.
May I ask a question and clarify something about the ad alternate that was presented last time? So we're not considering?
That's, that's next, next slide.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you got it.
Marquee?
Yeah, I think that's where we're going.
Yeah, yeah.
The marquee.
Got it. Just want to get to the. Here we go. Marquee. So as I mentioned in March, in 1929, a marquee was built in the same location that we are proposing. The existing, I'm sorry, performer marquee, the 1929 marquee, as I'll call it, extended 18 feet from the facade of the music hall building. It was nine feet above the sidewalk surface when the entryways were a little different. So I believe it was removed with the stairs on either side, which were shown in, in this photograph here. Anyway, so, so what we're trying to do, our proposal is to bring in a new marquee that mimics and respects and echoes that architecture, that aesthetic of the 1929 marquee decorative metal elements. So trying to reference the look and feel of the previous marquee while using modern materials and making sure it's safe and structural. There's a photo there from the Hendrick Hudson Building, using milk glass inserts, as well as some of that wrought iron and decorative metal. So our revised plan here doesn't include drainage in the top left. So our revised plan here doesn't include drainage in the top left diagram there. So it would just be a EPDM roofing, pretty typical roofing material to to drain water to the to either side, either wings of the the marquee at the building side so that as you're leaving the music hall, the drainage, if there's a heavy downpour, would be on either side of you. And you could exit safely and stay dry underneath this this large marquee. We would attach the the marquee to the existing medallions that are lovely, wonderful. You can see them there in the photo. This is something that we are going to the ZBA for, for the right-of-way encroachment. We're at this time trying to determine just how much relief we need from the ZBA, since we are exceeding just a few feet outside of that right-of-way encroachment. So that interpretation is is in progress as we speak, and we're hoping to be in front of the ZBA next month if possible. This marquee would include an electronic message center, a suspended LED sign. We do understand that that is not allowed in the downtown mixed-use district. It is worth mentioning that the existing bank sign at State and Second is currently non-operational, but that was an electronic message center. In its heyday, it did show the temperature and the time of day and other information. So we would similarly use a similarly respectful and non-obtrusive lighting element to to present this messaging to the to the neighborhood, whether it be for events or performers coming in. So that that is the idea here for the marquee. Any specific questions about the marquee?
Just a question from staff notes. The reference to zoning ordinances talk about the planning commission needing to approve electronic message centers. I guess I'm a little confused. It feels like in one breath we're saying not allowed needs a variance, and then in another breath saying the commission must approve them. So just as an order of procedure, who's who's got the say?
If the design was something that you did, you know, warrant approval of, then you would need to make a formal referral to the ZBA. You can say that on the record and say, we've we've reviewed the plans, we
Recommend adoption.
We recommend if you're going forward with this route, then you would be required to obtain ZBA approval.
And so Dash, on next month's zoning, have you approached them for both the encroachment as well as the, I guess it'd be a use variance or?
I believe it would be an area variance for both, and that is drafted in our ZBA application that will hopefully go out tonight.
Okay.
To to meet the deadline for the August seventh ZBA meeting.
Thank you.
I'm just reading the statute that was quoted in Russ Brooks' note to us, his email. And it says, before completion of this review, the planning commission shall refer the area variance application to the zoning board of appeals along with its written recommendation. So so does that suggest that we make a recommendation with respect to this area variance?
Yes.
Is that what your question was earlier?
Well, I didn't know if that was only as it relates to the dimensions of it versus, then it says an electronic message. That was it. Any other commissioner questions or comments on the marquee?
Do you have any photos of other marquees that are LED lit up in a respectful way or respectful way? Not not in front of me tonight in the packet. I think the Palace Theater is a good good nearby recommendation. I could certainly share a collection of examples that that share the the quality and vision that we have. And do you have guidelines that you'd be following for time of day reviews? Absolutely. So so we looked into what's in the city ordinance for EMCs. We would fully comply with that, make sure the the images and the messages aren't alternating too quickly or the foot candles are completely appropriate. So we would comply by all of those recommendations for the EMCs. The client has also said that they're open to turning it off certain times of day after a show. I'll say nine or 10 p.m., shut it off so that it doesn't create any sort of light trespass late at night. Yeah, that that's obviously my concern. And I, you know, I've gone by the palace hundreds of times. And during the day, it's totally fine. And at night, it's also a very different area than this. This is obviously much more residential and quiet. So I I do have concerns about the use of the LED screen at night. Yeah. Yep, absolutely. Yeah, as I said, the owner is is open to that discussion, to create restrictions, to be as as friendly to the adjacent properties as possible. Thank you.
Yep. I had a question. Just could you just speak to what sort of coordinations you've had with the various historic review bodies that with in specific about the marquee?
So we went in front of the Historic Review Commission. I believe it must have been the February or March meeting just before we were seen in front of you all. They provided some recommendations. I did happen to bring them with me, and I'll try to quickly reference their specific marquee recommendations. The canopy design should be simple and should conform to zoning. And recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, I think my, yeah, my concerns are just, you know, trying to be as sensitive as possible. While I also, I I take your point about the historic precedent set. And further, I think that the section two eighty-five seventy-one about placemaking, I think this would be an excellent placemaking element. So I I think this is a pretty excellent proposal, subject to ZBA's, you know, their rulings.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, but I thought I heard you say that the water that hits this marquee will be directed to the sides. Is there any gutter system or anything like that to keep it away from so that pedestrians don't have to walk through a wall of water?
Absolutely. So if you follow the crickets in this plan, this roof plan, the arrows bring the, they drain the water down to the scuppers that are in line with the diagonal chines. So it's it's going to be on either side of of yourself as a guest leaving the building. It won't be in front of you. You won't have to walk through it. There hasn't even been dialogue. It's it's not drawn here, but we've considered a like a rain garden or some sort of built structure, whether it's temporary seasonal or or built into the sidewalk, that would allow that water to drain and heat some plants while also signaling to pedestrians not to walk into that space because that's where the water's coming.
So that that's what I'm because I'm specifically inquired about pedestrians walking north or south on Second Street. Well, so they'll be able to avoid a spot of water.
Right. If if there's a downpour, these pedestrians are welcome to come underneath.
I would say that. If I wanted to see north or south, there's not, what will the what would they do? Those are gutters that will go up and down the pipes to bring it back to the face of the building, right?
Right. Correct. So the majority of the water is leaving the marquee here and here. If you're standing here and you step north, you're experiencing no no more water than if you were standing here or here.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
All right, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
This may be a building code issue, but I'm very surprised that you'd be able to dump water beyond the property line. And not across the city.
To the building. Excuse me? You're saying, I'm saying in other cities, I
This is a building code issue, so I'm just surprised.
Well, that's that's a that's a fair point. The property maintenance code does prevent, does accommodate stormwater, but you can't adversely affect, for example, the road.
Right.
Now, I know some of these details, you're you're in the process of working. That's a great point. Just looking at the that drainage issue has to be addressed. But if you look at the dimensions, that's a that that and again, this is not a negative comment, just something to be mindful. This marquee's projection is twenty-seven feet wide. And what is that, nine foot eight inches?
Correct, nine foot eight inches and and four feet from the building facade.
So if you if you if you look at that, that's an unheated structure. Just a snow load alone is about twelve thousand pounds. So it's something to be mindful of.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
It's for our structural engineers to figure out.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's also worth mentioning, just as far as draining the water into the public right-of-way. According to the survey, the property line is five foot three inches from the building facade. And we are four feet away from the building facade for that drainage. So I know it's a matter of inches or foot and three inches, but we would be cognizant of that and and further consider any sort of rain garden structure if that would be helpful to the public.
And Lauren, I just wanted to make sure you're comfortable. The the scuppers and the drainage is flowing up towards the building as opposed to a wave or outside of the property.
I understand. I'm saying some cities, as in New York City, you can't put a drop of water from your roof. It's Troy, I don't know the building code, so I'm just bringing it up. Any work including on the on the marquee has to be put back in New York City. Again, Troy may have a different building going into the building. But because it's on the property line, maybe that's a way to get around it.
Gotcha.
So if we have that thirteen inches.
I just want to make this concern known, but I mean, as a water, we had an incident in Lansingburg where someone was draining water onto the sidewalk, whether it was on their property or not, the water was flowing across the sidewalk. And in our variable weather in the fall and spring turned to ice. And I just want you to be mindful of that. I mean, it's it could be a serious issue for pedestrians.
Sure. Yeah, we'll look into that. Thank you.
I don't know how you address it.
Do you have something?
Okay. As for the rain garden, I mean, I like, love the idea of, you know, vegetation and about offering from from the runoff. Seems like it would be a good, as long as it could be done in a way that really doesn't detract, obviously, from the architecture there and respects kind of the historical character.
Right, absolutely.
Okay, and then anything else on the marquee? Otherwise, I know you wanted to talk about signage in general. Was there more?
Yes, this is my last slide and the, I guess the the report does follow this, but we don't need to dive into that. Yeah, that's far too many pages. This is this is the last slide of the presentation. I can discuss signage as a whole. And I'll I'll stay on this page because it's certainly relevant here. So our full signage scope includes the LED sign shown here, the EMC underneath the marquee, the large kiosk at the corner of the parking lot at State and Second where the existing EMC currently is, and two similar look and feel kiosks on either side of the courtyard. So they would share a resemblance with that primary kiosk at the parking lot. Those three kiosks and one EMC at the marquee are the full extent of the electrified signage options or proposal. We do have two analog signage proposals in the on the facade of the the annex in the courtyard. So that would just be a weather guard, rain guard, with perhaps some edge lighting on some eleven by seventeen printouts as as are commonly used today. So we are going in front of the ZBA as soon as possible, hopefully in August, to discuss all of these signage options.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so anything else to the presentation or you're also?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. So for commissioners, actions we have left, just to go over, we have to make a secret determination. We have, I believe we have public hearing, just looking at our last minutes here that Eric handed me. We had previously set public hearing for April. This is starting April seventeenth on this item. And then I know it was originally scheduled for the June meeting. And now we didn't hold the public hearing, did we? Yeah, so we still need to go through public hearing, secret determination, and site plan approval for actions on the site.
If I may jump in here, sorry, I didn't mention a moment ago. But before we go to public comment, can I turn to my colleagues and see if there's anything I missed? I'm going to invite any of them up. Anything else to mention on the client side or? Great. Okay, just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
So if commissioners are good for a bit, I'll have public comment at this point. All right, so if anybody came to speak about this item, we will open the floor for public comment. Our typical practice is you come up, you state your name and rec, uh, name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to speak. And that goes for if you're in the room or on Zoom. We can have Eric. If you are on Zoom, please use the raise hand function, and Eric will let me know. Is anyone here for this agenda? I'm in person. Please come up.
Hi. I'm Russ Brooks. I live at thirty-second First Street. And I'm very much in favor of this project, something I've wanted to see for a long time. I I like every aspect of it except the digital sign, the EMC on the marquee. And I want to stress upon the commission its position in making a reference of their recommendations to the zoning board of appeals regarding this, that this is a downtown multi-use district. And the EMCs are completely prohibited in the DMU for a reason, because there's a lot of residences there. And I think it's very important not set a precedent of starting to permit these. Because if you do, you're going to end up with EMCs on the American Theater when it gets done, every bodega, anybody who wants to put them up into their stores. Only DMU that has to be kept in and making decisions that impact the residents that live in downtown. It's Troy's very unique this way. You can go to many, many cities up and down the Hudson, and they're not like this. The business districts are often just purely business districts. So I I ask you to, you know, to pay attention to what a DMU is. Make a recommendation to zoning that electronic messaging centers not permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Peggy Conick. My address is eight seventy-five B. And I would like to commend Troy Savings Bank as a core of the foundation for taking action to make these needed improvements to their properties. As far as the electronic signage is concerned, those of us who are affected by strobe lights, bright lights and flashing lights that can instantly trigger migraines, whether it's daylight or nighttime. I'm not a fan of them. However, I do understand the need for an entity like the Music Hall to be able to publicize their events. Given that the historic Palace Theater in Albany has their lights going, and they too are a residential area. There are houses round there too. There are people that live near there too. I can understand the concern of the downtown residents and the need perhaps for the signage to be turned off after a certain time of night. A long time ago, Troy was a place to come to to party at night. That strip was lit up like Times Square on New Year's Eve. I was maybe five or six when that happened, before the destroy happened and most of our downtown was torn down. I'd rather see them have signage, even if they're limited in color and like what the whites are. I have no problem once I'm being advertised with who's coming to town and let the neighborhood know, and at the same time be respectful of the neighborhood, which I believe the Troy Music Hall has been throughout its entire time with the city of Troy. It's a gem that we have that nobody else in the country has. Someone showed that lots of people from all over the place come here to play simply because of those acoustics. I say let them have a sign.
Thank you.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Tracy Kennedy. I live at twenty-nine Second Street. I am a former board member of Music Hall and, as Russ stated, I'm very excited about these designs and the work that Music Hall is going to undertake. I would stress, though, I live I would stress, though, I live immediately across from the Music Hall. I have children whose bedroom faces the Music Hall. And the electronic sign would be bothersome. Anytime of the day or night, to be honest. And we're also in an historic district. I mean. I was held to unbelievable standards when I painted my house, when I put windows in. You know, met every single requirement of the historic board. This does not fit, you know, electronic. You know, lights do not fit into the aesthetic of that particular neighborhood. And I also. You know, the difference between the palace is you come off, you know, it's a massive wide open space. There's not buildings surrounding the palace in Albany. You come off that exit, it's right there. It makes a lot of sense. And Troy, I'm not quite sure who the Music Hall is going to be, you know, advertising to. Aside from the people who live directly across there, you know, the residents and they're. Across the street is all residential on, you know, sometimes the first, but definitely second, third and up. So I would respectfully ask that you reconsider just that one aspect of the of the design. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for comments on this? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. So. Wondering what the commissioner's perspective is on, you know, where you see actions tonight. I'd come into this expecting we'd be close to approval point, or at least the design had progressed enough that we could probably make a decision on it. It sounds like there are some outstanding items that commissioners would want to see. I'll I'll pause there and just kind of take the temperature.
The the goal is to do all all together.
There's no specific, let's say, we basically have to, we could close public comment. We could leave it open until if you plan on or if there's a need for a subsequent meeting.
My my question is, it's one application, all all three.
Oh, correct. Yes. That's right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I I I think since the marquee does need to go to in front of the ZBA. We do have a couple of items that are outstanding, at least in my my thinking, it makes sense to. Take an action on if we feel so inclined on recommendation and at least addressing the the the. The our approval for the sign. So that ZBA can process that. And then at next month's meeting, we can take final approval af- after the outcome of whatever ZBA tells. Their decision is, then we can take action on the full application. Does that sound reasonable? Did I miss something?
No, I I I'm not sure. I caught the entire stretch of that. Sorry.
Well, just that, just that, I think the only thing that we would need to do to know is tell ZBA.
And come back and you can do the whole thing.
Right. Now, we could condition wholesale approval on ZBA just for awareness. You, we we have done that before. If we wanted to approve it as is, we'd do so conditioned upon ZBA approval of the variances being requested or needed.
I have a question.
Laying out all the options.
Is it possible to pull the marquee out and then approve everything else?
Is it specifically framed that way in the application as an adult? I mean, to me, that's really a construction adult.
Correct. If we're currently in the ninety percent guaranteed maximum price process with our construction manager, so if the budget doesn't allow for the marquee. It won't be built, but we need to, of course, get your approval regardless. So that's that's why we brought it in front of you all today. We we do want to mention, though, that we we don't want to further delay receiving a building permit for the rest of the work on this project. If signage and marquee, if that packet of material needs updating and and needs to come back. We would happily take that out, bring it back to to you all on ZBA separately. While allowing for the the remaining courtyard, parking lot, rooftop equipment to be approved.
So in that case, if we were to recover, we would be doing so specifically with an exclusion, I think. Would we be allowed to do that excluding? There'd be a conditioned exclusion of the marquee from the approval. But from this approval, yes, but you're not, you're not killing the patient. Just kind of essentially hold it open.
Yes.
And proceed further with it.
Excluding it from.
As separable. Okay.
So so we would hold it open and make a recommendation that we'll discuss.
Yes, we're still going to discuss our condition.
I think that that works pretty well.
Okay. And then so some of the other topics, we've kind of had more substantive dialogue or back and forth on where the the parking lot, really, I. I don't think there's, are there, let's start with the low hanging fruit. Is there any further recommendations or requests on? The courtyard space? No, okay. Anything related to the HVAC amendments to the to the building?
Don't paint it yellow.
Definitely not. And green.
Any other comments?
But in all seriousness. As for being painted at all, are you recommending or do you have a stance on it not being painted whatsoever versus?
Take whatever step to make it disappear that you can.
Yeah, I would follow the historic review recommendation on that.
Just to be clear, the historic review recommendation was.
Matching.
I thought they wanted metal metal shielding.
Dash, could you clarify? I thought your your report earlier was that they suggested. To match, maybe it was just on a particular face of the building versus all of it.
It's it's not that specific, but a architectural metal screens were recommended by the HRC. At the time, the rooftop equipment was much larger. It's been reduced time and time again, pushed further back. And given what you saw in the model, it just seems like you wouldn't see much of it anyways.
What was the comment then about painting it that you brought up earlier?
The the HRC mentioned painting only the ductwork along Franklin Alley.
Okay.
Since you're closer to it, I suppose, as you're looking right up above you and it's. Just on touching the face of the building, but annex rooftop equipment is much more out of view and. Really, you'd only see it from another building up high in that area.
I mean, I I'm not saying that I feel strongly about one another. I'm just saying that the HRC's recommendation is different.
Yeah, fair enough. You're you're right. I would respectfully say it doesn't seem like screening it. It's gonna truly end up hiding it. It may just end up making more of a visual nuisance.
It it seems like an added cost and would just increase the space of all the metal.
It's possible, but you could do it in a way where you built, you know, you could go to the moon with this and build a brick enclosure around it, of course. In terms of the realm of realistic approaches, I guess I'd agree with you.
Right.
So, all right, if we're good on the HVAC, right, we're good on the courtyard, that leaves the parking lot and the marquee. So parking lot, would we be prepared on that? Or do you feel there's another meeting necessary? Do commissioners need to see the drawings come back with the revisions we discussed today?
I don't. I don't.
I I have concerns about the design of the parking lot, and I don't want to hold up the other aspects of the project because I just, as I said, I don't have any concerns about the other. Two aspects of it, but.
How do you handle the concerns with conditions on an approval?
Yeah, yeah, especially if the applicant was was open to those conditions, obviously.
Yes, we are. Okay, so I think I think I would make a motion to close public hearing on this.
Second.
Okay, thanks. Moving to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that leaves seeker determination here. Are we prepared at least on seeker? Somebody bring a motion either for a positive deck or a negative declaration?
I'll move to declare a negative declaration.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving to a vote, all in favor? Thank you. So that leaves site plan approval. So again, it sounds like we're feeling there's a way to go about site plan approval with conditions and likely. Oh, actually, before we get into that, on the marquee, have you and the developer or the client discussed? Alternatives to an electronic system like a more traditional. Like just conventionally lit letterboard style?
Not in great depth yet, but we we are up into that conversation. Or do you mean just like letters that are kind of attached to the board like in analog style?
Yeah.
Yeah, not yet.
Like the Madison Theater and Albany comes to mind.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
That's it's worth considering. I'll speak with the client.
Was, and I want to understand too specifically about electronic messaging centers. Was this a a key want in the project to have that?
For for improved messaging, yes. To better promote events and and performances, yes. It it would still be modest in its illumination, in its messaging. It wouldn't be strobing. It wouldn't be cycling incredibly fast. It would, I assume, say and communicate the same message for for days at a time, depending on the events that are upcoming. But no, we we can certainly consider analog methods. We we still would pursue the EMCs at the ZBA and see what they would consider.
Yeah, I mean, I I the two neighbor concerns think ring pretty loudly for me. I think if I lived across the street, I would feel.
Just make sure you're speaking up in the mic.
If I lived across the street, I'd feel very strongly about the the lights as well. I think it it does have an impact in this historic district, so. I think understanding what other alternatives you have would be really helpful.
I see both sides of it personally. I recognize that it's easier to update electronic signage. I recognize that it's a bit more eye catching, but I also see that it's somewhat out of character for for the building, for the area. And that it is a different, different collection of, I don't know, considerations relative to the palace. I think it is a different spot in the city and just kind of reads different, so.
And somehow without this, the messaging of the Music Ball gets out there today. It was the best year you've ever had. I've heard that over and over. And when you have a year that goes into the summer, it'll be even a better year. So do you really need flashing lights to get to that point? I'm kind of feeling the neighbor's pain because if I lived right across the street, I wouldn't want to see that. I even if it ended at nine, I I'd still be looking at it going, well.
Technically, the the code does not allow for the flashing.
I understand. We're we're going to make a recommendation on a variance.
Right.
And it's not flashing, but the lights are there and they may be bright. And even with all the concerns that you're expressing for modifying. It would, it would be create anxiety for me and would not be a positive for the neighborhood. So that's that's just addressing whether we recommend this variance.
And and to that end, you know, the the EMC standards, I I mean, I think. Other than what the applicant is asking for, the the more they want and tend to have it at all in the DMU. You know, there's a restriction that it cannot change more than once in a twenty four hour period. It must have, there must be a photocell to control brightness and automatically dim. Not more than than two colors for any message and the brightness gets into very like incredible detail that I think. The the point being LEDs are incre- have an incredible amount of control. So that I don't necessarily know that there's actually. Brad, I don't actually know that there's a conflict here. This this is a thing about dialing in the exact right. Specific, you know, measure and or having like use based, time based, you know, restrictions or whatever. Having said all that, I guess my comment to to you to to you Bill is is also like, you know, we're we're making a recommendation. I think maybe our recommendation is just sort of like what we we understand these things and we want the applicant to explore other options. But I I am comfortable with recommending that there be some form of EMC if ZBA thinks agrees with us, basically.
Yeah, I think they'd look to us for guidance on some of those limits or, you know, outside of what's explicitly right out here if we had more restrictive or. Just tight requirements of it, like ones that come to my mind that we could consider. Would be colors that could be used, you know, like off white and black only versus, you know, blues and orange and yellows. Loud, loud nuisance colors. I shouldn't call them nuisance colors, but more more obvious and distracting colors like yellow. So those recommendations we could give if we were to recommend approval that on top of these could help. Minimize any any nuisance or issue caused.
I also agree with the point that one of the ladies made. The, there's no comparison between the Palace Theater and Front Music Hall as far as the sites. One is a car oriented place where you're reading from a car. These are narrow streets. There's not a lot of car traffic. I, my proposal, if it was me, would be to have no signage on the marquee at all. What's did you explore having signage at the human scale down like old fashioned? Lit boards. I I see this as a pedestrian area, very little. I don't know what, if you're going to gain much. Many ticket sales by having a signage. This is just my thought.
There are pedestrian scale kiosk style signs shown in the courtyard as well as the parking lot. But we we do feel that given the the pedestrian delight in this area at this corner, that the the marquee signage would would certainly capture your attention. And it just adds to the the spectacle and the novelty of this building and this institution.
Well, there's no question, the marquee is a good idea. The question is, what are you going to put on the face of it?
Right.
And you could, you could have just an announcement of Troy Savings Bank Music Ball would still capture. The idea of your facility plus the beauty of the whole building in the street. I I I'm I'm really ripped by this. I think that you could get away if you could articulate really limiting. Factors protecting the neighborhood that maybe some lighting during shows. Maybe right before shows and during them, but a constant light lit up facade just doesn't feel like it belongs. So Eric, I'm I'm talking to you, but I'm really talking to you.
Yeah, I I agree, Bill. I think we all have enough EMCs in our pockets anyway, so what do we need?
Yeah, it's it's that's kind of true. I'm supposing.
So take if I'm, you know, counting here, I'm hearing at least three commissioners who seem to prefer not to have electronic messaging.
Make that four.
Make that four. Okay, well, Stephen.
I'm I'm fine with it, but.
Okay, so I would suggest if there is a perceived consensus among us that. One of you bring a motion as to how we would make a recommendation to the ZBA on that aspect of it.
Well, I I think our recommendation would be that we do not approve the variance for the EMC. Isn't that it? I mean, I I'm I'm the wrong person to ask those.
Was that a motion?
It's not a question. I mean, I'm not going to put it in the in the right form, but that's the concept.
Yes.
We would, we would, I would make a motion that we do not recommend the granting of the variance for the EMC.
Okay.
I think just.
Somebody's welcome to second.
I just, we want to, I think maybe we want to add that we do support.
The area variance or the size variance, basically.
Yeah, the marquee.
I I I'm all for that.
Do it all in one.
That and make that motion with that.
I'll second that.
With that edit.
Motion's been seconded. We'll go slow roll. One, moving to about one. I mean, yes. Okay.
Yes.
Bill, Suzanne.
Yes.
James.
Yeah.
Stephen. Yes. I will also vote yes. Okay, so that just leaves site plan approval, which we can do with the exclusion of the marquee for now. And we could condition the modifications to the parking lot.
Sure, I just want to make sure that they're going to be. Eric, are you comfortable with reviewing? You heard a lot of our comments. Are you comfortable with reviewing them at staff level? So my list, first and foremost, are the ADA accessible curb cuts on the. I guess it'd be the.
The crossings.
Southwest and Northwest corners of State and Second Street.
East.
Oh, sorry, east, yes. Southeast and and northeast corners of State and Second Street. You know, after talking about the curb cut earlier and you brought up that it's a one way. I feel even more strongly because it signals that you should be turning left there instead of right.
Or the traffic would enter from there. Or the traffic would enter from there.
So I do feel strongly that the curb cut needs to be amended. I recognize that changing that grade on the concrete is probably very costly, and so I do welcome ballards, street trees, other creative solutions, but I I think some uh, level of addressing it is is necessary. And I would like to see a designated path entrance on the south uh vehicle entrance of the of the parking lot as well, um. Ideally on the the north, I would say the the north side of that path would probably make the most sense, the north side of that driveway, but it's not mandatory, whatever you think. But you know what I'm talking about, right, Dash?
Yes, yes, I do, yeah.
Is this a formal motion that you're making?
I could redo it if you want me to. But it, is there anything I'm missing that you had on your list, Stephen?
I mean, I think you you hit it all uh with the like possible addition of just addressing that uh, the pedestrian circulation within in whatever way that that you understand and see fit sees fit with those other decisions that you might be making, so a little bit of like, I can't quite give you exactly because it depend on your design choices, but just descriptive condition would be definition of pedestrian path. Exactly, exactly, that's, thank you, Ryan.
Um, and and James, if you don't mind, uh, just clarifying a little bit, the modification of the curb cut, how is that work uh accomplished and how is that paid for between the city, being in the city right of way and the client's project? It was stated before, I just wanna.
So we obviously deliberated responsibility it is quite publicly. Um, my ask is that the applicant covers the costs considering the the historic use of the site and the proposed changes and the rest of the project, and the ability to address it creatively and not have to, you know, necessarily move curb or concrete. Um, but yeah, that that is my ask in in, yeah, in this case, where I'm I'm hoping, you know, the applicant will agree to this condition.
Sub- subject to the approval of the city.
Right, 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 but that's gonna be in the efficient one.
And then the other um item that we discussed was a a bench amenity around the corner of Second on Two uh State.
Yep. Will you guys accept that as a condition?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Absolutely, I I
Put a lot of benches.
I'll I'll speak with the client and decide on a product and locations, but.
Change the whole feel of that.
Sure.
And then the the last thing, just to clarify, the marquee is gonna be included in this. It's not gonna be included in there.
Explicitly exclude it.
Okay.
From our current approval. Are we excluding the EMC component of the marquee or the construction of the marquee in its entirety?
Yeah, I think that's up for discussion.
That's the discussion here, because if we want to see it back, if we want to see its final form via the approval, we would need to exclude it now.
Well, I think, you, the Would you say that, if we want to see it back, along with the lighting idea, it's approved, the variance is approved by zoning.
Yes. They would get the variance, but if you exclude it now from the site plan approval, they would have to come back on it real as a separate item.
But I, I just think that the ZBA is either gonna pass the variance or deny the variance or application, so it's it's up to the ZBA whether or not they have the EMC, but we're, we've all stated that.
And the size of it.
But we, I I I think if we can bifurcate this so that we, we, I I think the marquee looks great coming out from the the medallion, the size looks good.
I agree.
The whole, I I I would say we're, we recommend approval of the marquee, we you know, do not recommend the use of electronic lighting, that's our recommendation, so.
Other stylistic features, you're accepting.
Oh, I I thought what they had was pretty good, I liked it.
Just making clear.
Yeah.
If you approve now, you're accepting all the other elements of it.
Okay.
The rain garden, for instance.
I was gonna.
Right.
Well, I like, I I thought, but that came from you, and I like that idea too, but I I I don't know, is that, is that a condition? I think addressing the water flow.
Right.
Is something that the city, that everybody would want.
Which that is addressed is part of what this commission serves to.
So I I'm gonna I suggest we, we approve the marquee in the site plan and.
I'm fine with that, that.
And may, we have our recommendation to the ZBA, the ZBA will list out on the electronics and then they can move on.
Okay, just one final question, does the EMC exclusion include the parking lot, kiosk EMC and the two courtyard smaller kiosk EMCs, tho- those were presented as electrified signage.
So are those part of the same variance you're seeking?
Yes. Yes, they are.
I I would say.
Other commissioners?
I I would say yes, but not as firmly. I think that the words in the courtyard sort of like if they face each, it depends on what they, what they look like, you know? The 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 big marquee with with large letters staring at you when you live directly across the street.
Let's just be a little decisive here.
Oh, really? You're trying to cut me off? We're out of work, so I, so I I I think that it's probably better not to have any electric. So that's what I would say, but it's, but it's to a degree.
I I think maybe to, maybe that helps, something that would help clarify our our decision making is, I I think that the Troy Music Hall is a particular and unique place, so I think that either we say that because of its in i- its nature, and because of its importance, because of its you know, potential placemaking ability, we say electronic messaging is allowed for the full site, or we say it's not allowed for the full site, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to say it it makes sense here but not there, because I don't, you know.
I'll be a contrarian voice when you're done.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I guess to the, the parking lot side, side?
Yeah, either the parking lot or the courtyard are both pedestrian height, their pedestrian scale as opposed to the awning, which would be a bit higher and more in people's eyes, also probably a bit brighter. Um, and also the the scale, massing of those signs. Um, I could, maybe maybe it would help for us to understand what the other electronic messaging centers would look like, do you have that you could pull up?
Yes. So, um the get over to the courtyard, as as mentioned a couple times now, the um the renders are process sketches, it's it's not, this isn't a shop drawing of what the the courtyard signage kiosk will uh look like. But we are imagining uh custom decorative metal signage. Almost there. And the um, the the similar looking kiosk at the uh, the parking lot is just a kind of a larger sibling, if you will, of these two.
Those just don't bother me personally.
They're pretty, they're pretty unobtrusive, even if they have some lighting in them. It's just.
But is it the the signage itself that is LED or is there LEDs around?
So the the two signage panels you're seeing at the annex facade, those are analog, just eleven by seventeen sheets would be slipped in with edge lighting to illuminate it, the two kiosks at the sidewalk surface are uh are EMCs, we're proposing currently as EMCs, so those would be an LED, that would be an LED screen, it would have text, it would be white or off white with black background or similar. Um, yeah, to to convey messages of uh different events and such on all four panels of them. Uh, undecided at this time, it certainly wouldn't make sense to have the expense of an LED facing the building. So maybe we, again, we would go into further shop drawings, specifics and the details of construction as we move forward with the design of these sites, but this size and scope and scale as you're seeing is roughly the the bounds in which we would work with it.
Suzanne, are you itching to say something?
How about this, um, we do site plan approval for everything else except the lighting.
And then what happens with the lighting?
Then we need to see more concrete drawings of what what you're proposing.
So on us, just to be clear, on a separate application, the applicant would come back with full signage plan, including EMCs and analog signage options.
I like that.
But all the three critical site scope items absent of any signage is on the table tonight.
Yes, that that would be my recommendation.
Is that acceptable to city staff and the council?
Uh, I I I think that, well, first off, I just want to make it clear for the record that no internal illumination is permitted in this district as well. So just so you guys have that understanding, if you guys are making a recommendation for uh, either per permitting, like the design that features EMCs and internal illuminations, uh, you know, make your recommendation, if you're not, then that's also your recommendation to the ZBA, I think you can still make an approval, you know, for 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 the various components of of the project subject to those recommendations being conveyed to the ZBA and their approval or review. At least that's my two cents.
So Mike, I'll make my question more specific. If we exclude the signage, these pedestrian signs uh, from the approval, and I guess the marquee as well.
I don't, I don't know that you'd want to do that, I think that essentially you'd want to leave the the sign, the lighting details of the signs to the ZBA, and you can still approve the project.
Is that what you're gonna?
Your recommendation clearly is that you don't approve the lighting and the signage, and therefore that's what the ZBA would would take into consideration.
When we made the prior motion, it, my read of it or my understanding was it was specific to the marquee. Not about the rest of the elements of signage.
But which have now come into conversation, right?
So I think Eric means, I think Eric's point makes a lot of sense.
Right, so the, so what we're saying is, we we want to go, we want to try to approve the whole thing with our recommendation on the marquee which we've established, but then we need to still clarify what we're recommending on the other signs.
I think we should update our recommendation on the marquee to just be about EMCs and and the approval of the marquee otherwise, and then approve, I I'll make a motion to approve the project with conditions, that's it.
If we updated that recommendation uh to be about the EMCs, would it be the same recommendation then is your point?
Yeah.
Being against EMC. Also.
I would advise a written recommendation by the, by this, by this uh.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
I would advise a written recommendation. Stating the points of your concerns, and that way we can easily uh extend that over to the ZBA.
Okay.
That artic, that articulates.
The code is against them, so is that like we're start, where, is that like we're sta- standing in the way of something that the city's approved, we are repeating what the city has required and saying we're not in favor of turning on the lights here for these folks.
I mean, only the ZBA has the jurisdiction to to vary from the code in that regard.
Yeah, right. So they'll still have the freedom to do that no matter what we.
Right, so it.
Yes, but you you you'll give them a recommendation, either supporting or opposing the application for the variants.
So just to update our recommendation, I said earlier, Bill, you you made it right, but I'll make a motion that we.
I need it right back.
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the ZBA that they do not approve the variance for the EMCs, but that we do support the area variance for the size, the size of the marquee.
Again, that's, okay.
Is that a motion or second?
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Bill seconded, uh, one. Moving to vote, one, Bill. Suzanne.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Stephen.
Yes, I'll also vote yes.
I'll I'll make a motion that we, I'll make a motion that we site plan with the following conditions, um, that the curb cuts on the
State Street.
Northeast and southeast corners of Second and State are made ADA uh, accessible and compliant, um, that any drainage, um or yeah, any any drainage concerns from the marquee are addressed on the sidewalk, whether that be through rain gardens um, or other, other means. Um, that the excessively wide curb cut on State Street at the exit of the parking lot is addressed, uh, whether that be with ballards or street trees or other means. Um, that at least two benches are added um, along the parking area uh on the sidewalk facing the the roadway, um, on either uh State or Second. Um, and that a dedicated pedestrian path is provided uh, at the same location as the vehicle ingress and egress sites on State and Second.
James, you just said uh the benches either on State or.
And or, I I should have said, I guess, it could, they, you could put two benches, I'm asking for two benches on the site, sorry.
A second.
Were there more conditions?
That's it.
That was it. Okay, so sorry, the initial seconded, moving to a vote, um, we'll go in by one, one. Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Suzanne.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Stephen.
Yes, I also vote yes, thank you.
Thank you all.
This is gonna be great.
Thank you, we're very excited, thank you all for your service to the city and improving the built environment, really appreciate it.
Next agenda, Link's 2024 0008 for the Taylor Two Project, 125 River Street.
See you. Any, any groups over there?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We're not done, so. See the smoke coming out of your home. Okay, we had a battery die up here, so one moment.
I'm glad we did that.
Yeah, I I.
I disagree with specifically the EMC.
Okay, I think we have it here, um, good evening, um, Roger Keating from Vodella Associates.
Hello, again, welcome back.
Welcome, um, with me tonight is representatives from uh Penrose as well as Dan Architects. Um, here tonight to do an overview of where we're at with the project and provide an update as to um, where we've been since the last time we've been for the board. Um, last month, we were at the ZBA to um present um the variances that we had um, talked about at the last meeting, um, when we were before the board, they had requested some additional information. Um, so the item was tabled that night, we've since um put together some additional information for the ZBA. Um, that's been submitted so that we can go before them um next month, um, hopefully. Um, so that is, that is where we are on that side of things, um, where we've we've been working on the site plan since we were before the board last, um, trying to address a number of comments. Um, and we're continuing to work through that here from the the time where we were um last time, but I would like to um go through some of those changes to the plans now, so when we were before the board last, there was a lot of discussion regarding the parking in that area, um, and so, um council member had requested that we take a harder look at the neighborhoods um surrounding the project site. Um, and we did that, uh, we listened to the comments, we we actually looked at all the areas, and one of the things that we were able to find was that um, at the corner of Congress and River, so on the left hand side of this page here, where you can see the the corner is where our um commercial component is to the project. Um, the thing that we had found is that there's a lot of timed parking um on those two side streets, and so. And so one of the recommendations when we talked was to take a look and see about being able to capture and utilize some of that parking. And we feel that um, we have a great opportunity to be able to use that parking for that commercial use. And so one of the topics was, well, could we consider banking some parking? Um, because we can get better green space. And since we don't know what the commercial user is at the moment, we felt that what a great idea. And knowing that we have that user here, um, or we don't know what the user is just yet. Um, we felt that we could bank some of that parking. So we updated the TMT, TPMP to spell out what we needed for the commercial space um, for parking. And then we, we looked at banking that into the building. Um, and so what we've done is all the parking that would be facing closest to Front Street. Um, which would be, you know, if you were heading in, we've pulled all those out. So that where we had our green space areas, we've, we've increased those. Um, specifically around, on the right inside of the page, you can see where there's uh, our park area and things like that. We've really increased those, those areas for green space. Um, so when we went back through, um, we also looked at um, and we're still working, we're still working through this a little bit is how many more parking space can we start to bring into the building? Because um, we were talking about, well, can we, can we pull back some of that where we had the, the different levels of excavation? Um, and we were able to determine that um, we can bring some of that back into the building, which further helps us create that more green space along, along the, the frontage here. Um, so those were some of the bigger changes that you see at the site plan. We've obviously been working on the landscaping and such, as you can see here with the, the green space that um, this now brings, it's going to create more green space adjacent to uh, Front Street, which I know was um, a topic that was brought up last time. Um, and then there was a few things, um, John with Dattner is here um, with respect to some transparency questions. Um, John, I don't know if you're able to speak to anything regarding building transparency, but I know there were some comments regarding that. So um, maybe an elevation, Eric, if you just wanted a building elevations, that would work.
Specifically, staff comment is about the.
Thirty percent. Yeah. Yeah. So there's, there's three criteria. There's the thirty percent for the residential at the ground floor. There's fifty percent for non uh, residential at the ground floor and sixty percent for commercial or retail. So um, we, we didn't add materials to this presentation, but the uh, the, the residential percentage of blazing at the ground floor is around forty-four percent, so well in excess of that thirty. Uh, the retail, uh, very similar to what we have across the street at Taylor One. Uh, we'll, we'll be able, we'll be able to achieve that sixty percent as well. Uh, we're still, you know, defining that on the elevations, but um, that's something that we can easily do here. And then the fifty percent is also easily achieved. So we have calculated that. We didn't add it to this presentation, but we can make those uh, and update materials or show those calculations.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, the staff is just sort of a little bit um, uncertain as to what the, like the bay, the bay areas that, that you kind of see on that uh, right behind like that, that ramp. Uh, dotted line indicating where that uh, ramp is.
Near that number one on the bottom elevation. Is that right? Is that right here?
More, more towards the sou- southern portion. Yeah. Sort of like midway through the building towards the southern portion, or, you know, are those, are those just bays that are walled off? Or are those going to be windows or the, are, are they transparent as a ground floor?
Those, those are actually uh, bulk storage spaces.
Okay.
Um, so there's really no need to have glazing there.
That clarifies that. Yeah.
Thanks, John, for helping clarify that. So um, as we were reviewing staff comments, um, we, we also noted that um, staff believes that we are, um, we have enough materials um, provided for seeker determination. Um, and so um, as part of the process of where we go back to the ZBA. Um, it's my understanding that the ZBA has to have a seeker determination in order to act on the, the um, variance applications. So if the board um, feels that they have enough information from us to make a negative deck. Um, so that we can go back to ZBA to get um, those variances acted, acted upon whether positively or negatively. Um, we think that we're kind of in that situation in the moment where we're between those two on a number of the items. And so um, that would also be something that we would um, look for consideration. So that's my brief overview. I would turn it back to the board if the board has any questions, comments. Happy to try and answer any of those at this time. So thank you.
I, I have a question uh, right here. And, and it's, the rendering that you have on page forty-one uh, shows that the ramps have disappeared. And I'm just wondering if you could, if you could elucidate on whether you have some inside information or some public information. I'll take either one. As to whether or not the bridge uh, development has reached a stage where you'll see that, you look at that and you think that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good outcome if that could happen.
So the, the ramps are, the ramps are planned to go away. Um, from our understanding, they're planned to go away. Um, to the, the level of that retaining wall of goes there is still a bit in flux as to what they're that they're looking to um, provide. My understanding though, that there's going to be um, an upcoming public um, meeting regarding that project for, for that. So we've been working with um, that consultant on the, on the project. Um, we've been really focused a lot on how our pedestrian connectivity can still make it from if you make um, on our rendering that you'll see, we have, we've maintained the sidewalks that are between that wall area in the building so that we can get people from the reconfigured River Street back down to Front Street. Um, so we've worked hard to make sure that we kept those into the, into the project um, as part of it.
Would this potentially add additional street parking in front of the two buildings?
As it looked like, from what I can tell is that there wouldn't be, just from a road diet um, over there, doesn't seem to be that wide from what I can tell.
Could you go to page forty-five and walk us through the connection between the River Street level? And Front Street level for pedestrians?
Sure. So um, so you'll notice um, along both of the curves. You'll see, we, we've kind of created the um, the serpentine hatching there, which represents the um, the, the sidewalk that we're looking to bring back up to River Street. So there's a sidewalk that's there today. Um, but we'll look to um, improve upon that as we go through. Want to add some benches and some landscaping in that corridor as well. So you can see where we've added some benches. Those are those orange uh, figures on the map in some trees along those. We have those on both sides.
I wish I could put that view side by side with the other one, because it feels like in the ISO view or the bird's eye view. The, okay, I see. It lo- it reads as far more triangular, the space between the roadway. So it basically is.
I think green space all the way in a gray shadowed area.
Yeah. Right. But then I see sidewalk specifically on the northern um, side. I see the sidewalk kind of tight to the building there. And so this rendering really basically would need that green space shown. That's just what's missing between the two, right?
We, we, we're trying to show the existing condition, gotten as much as possible in the event that there's something that didn't happen, but we did want to try to capture that street view on that overall bigger um, you know, ten thousand feet, you know, flyby type of thing. Um, again, trying to make sure that this works with both scenarios in the event that for some reason that that project didn't happen, we know that we can still get our pedestrian connections there. We can also get them to work in the future as well. So trying to make sure that we can capture both of those under both scenarios.
So do I understand that you're, you're, we're working with the, the consultant that's working on that, the, the?
Yes. So as we're, as we're, you know, as we're advancing things and we, we um, see that, okay, there's the sidewalk connection. We really want to make sure that we're still able to maintain this here. How does that work with where their alignments are? Now, they've moved a couple of times. So, you know, we've been moving a little bit too. But um, we feel like the elevations of the road and everything, when we get close to those intersections is getting, you know, really close to being you know, it's not going to change very much now at this point, especially since we have existing intersections there. So we feel like we've got we've got that pedestrian connectivity there um, at this point. Um, and really looking forward to that plan being able to be shared further.
So I'm glad you said exactly that. So uh, so basically, I, I think my question's more towards Russ, I mean, we're clearly making progress, we're making decisions that are impacting this site plan. So does the city, is the city able to issue, the commission progress about what's, what's going on in the day?
With the, with the bridge structure?
Right, like the reconfigur- reconfiguration of the intersection at, at the bridge. I mean, at least in so far as, I mean, it's clearly impacting our, our, the, our decisions on site plan.
I, I think we're going to be in a, in a better position to answer that at the, at the next meeting. We, uh, that's still in the, in, they're finalizing that right now. And we plan on meeting with uh, Craig Manning and LaVella to joint meeting to go over that in detail.
Excellent. I mean, as soon as you can get something to us, I would be, I mean, I feel like I'm I, I, I think a lot of us are feeling like we're trying to make a decision.
That, that's right. That's, that's a, that element, it's a missing piece at the moment. And how that integrates with the development, that's a important feature. I think we're, like I said, I think all of us will be in a better position at the next meeting.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Since it's structural, right, and we know it's not going away, there's going to be just green space there. Like what, what are you thinking it could impact?
I have been told that it doesn't necessarily need to remain in place.
Oh.
But likely due to cost of remediating this whole area, uh, those uh, retaining walls probably will stay in place. But it isn't really born of a structural necessity.
Okay. That's, that's a recent kind of discovery though, because originally.
The, the latest version that I've seen shows the wall actually being pulled back a little bit from that. So maybe there's less of that retaining wall when they come back with the, the, their updated plan.
I mean, I think the thing that I'm mostly thinking about is, is with all of the various variances and easements. If those don't stand, then our entire thought process around this may shift.
So that was my point when we first reviewed this.
Right. So the easements that are, that are directly impacting the project are the permanent easements associated with the drainage infrastructure primarily. Um, and it's also references to the wall as, as well as the, the sidewalk and pedestrian area. So the drainage infrastructure, um, it's our understanding that that infrastructure is still going to stay in place in that corridor from what, from where the drainage currently is picked up. Um, much of that area that drains down from the, the local streets even gets collected into a network and then finds its way into those easements and ultimately down to, to the riverside before it goes either to the combined sewer. Well, actually in that section, they're separated for the most part. So um, they, they go to the river at that point. Um, so we don't see that those lines would be removed because there's already all that water that's going through those corridors. So um, we've been, we've been working to those lines because of, of that.
So I have a question. It's sort of a chicken and egg question. Probably don't know yet, but which would come first, changing the road or your project?
Well, I would think at this, at the, at the pace we're going, probably ours, but I'll turn to Noah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I, I just wanted to jump in and announce here, but um. So, um, you know, there is some conversation about the bridge ramp structures and whether they're going to go away and, and you know, that you know, this is a public right of way. Um, the housing authority does not own any of that land. Um, the easements, which are probably on a different page somewhere, are uh, the DOT has easements in this area. So this green area here, um, we, we can't build to that. And in conversation with DOT, there are some other easements on the property. You see this triangle here and there's a little parcel over here. Um, we are working on getting those released right now, but the DOT uh, under no circumstance will release this.
What do you mean by you can't build to that? Does that mean you can't build the sidewalk that's shown in the rendering?
So DOT, DOT, DOT has easement rights over this, which means if we, if we, even though they don't own it, they have the, they have rights over it. Effectively, if we built on it and they said, we need access to this, you would need to, you would need to remove whatever's on that. And, and if we went for uh,
So you mean structure built over?
Structure built over it. Exactly. That's why it's just landscape. Um, and, and in conversation with them, they would not release this um, in the future until such time as this project was effectively finished.
The reconfiguration.
The reconfiguration. And, and even then, it would be up to a determination. So the time period by which these easements would go away are undefined if ever. Um, and again, we would never be able to uh, secure financing to build improvements on this area because those easements are in place. And so to Roger's point, um, you know, we're, we're building this condition. And in the event that these ramps uh, go away or, or uh, to your, you know, triangular point, like could the goal would be to um, uh, uh, bring them together and so from a, from a landscaping and access perspective. But unfortunately, you know, there's, there's really no possibility that we would be able to ever, ever build on this, like I think was originally.
And again, and again, Noah, the, the, the drainage that goes through there is, you know, it goes up Congress Street up to, up a few blocks of the city infrastructure that connects into this ultimately, then runs down through that DOT easement and then to the river. So um, that would be a really big drainage project. Um, that would have to be undertaken to go up that way.
Is anyone? I'm just, we understand that there's not going to be a structure there, right?
Yeah, I, I think the question was more so like, what is the timing of the changes? And if they were changed, could there ever be a different geometry there?
Yeah. And, and just to further, like, I, I was referencing the easements, which are the, you know, the currently landscaped area around the ramps. But separate from that, if the ramps did go away, that, that land does belong to the state. And that would have to be disposed up by the state as well. Um, and that's an undefined process that, you know, that's not, that's not easement owned by the housing authority. That's actually, you know, even city or state owned land, and that would have its own process. So um, you know, for all those reasons, we uh, you know, can't approach on them.
Be good with that question?
Yes.
Um, a couple of other topics we discussed at the previous meeting were uh, floor setbacks that are required in the resilient waterfront overlay district.
Um, yes, this is um, one of the variance applications that we have um, in for the ZBA. Is this, are you referring to the ten foot setback? Yes. So this is something that um, we have the variance application in. Um, how that's interpreted is being somewhat open.
Um, did you receive any feedback on the topic outside of they can't take action until?
Um, they, they, there was discussion um, and there, but there was no formal recommendations or anything to us at that meeting um, as it relates to that. So um, but there were some opinions, but just of that individual board member, you know, not anything official from, from a, you know, a comment back. So I think that's part of a, a few of our, our um, variance requests is that to get before that board so that we can get some clarification on those. So that um, we can then be able to come back um, to this board, whether positively, negatively on, on those variance requests so that we can, you know, best move forward with the project. So I, chicken or egg, she had said. I think uh, I feel like a little bit there just because there's a little bit of uh, unknown on a few of those.
And again, that would be an instance where we could have formal recommendation as a commission to the ZBA. Just for awareness. Um, and then another topic I remember going through personally is frequent for me. Uh, rooftop activation. Could you speak about the, where, where your design progressed or programming?
Rooftop.
Considerations.
What considerations?
It seems like it's changed a bit. If I remember some of the um, more rectangular endpiece buildings at a different rooftop configuration before.
Can you go to one of the um, other slides for?
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, that one there.
Yes, I, I don't remember seeing the green room around the edges, the roof.
So there was a, there was a, there was a green box in like more the central portion of it the last time. And then they, they moved it to the edges um, as part of that.
Yeah, we, we have expanded that, at least shown in this illustration. How that's actually programmed, what it actually becomes, whether it's, you know, sun deck or, I'm not quite sure where it's going to be, but it's going to be probably some passive recreation. Not quite sure where it's gonna be, but it's gonna be probably some passive recreation area. Do you wanna add to that?
Yeah, um I was just gonna say that the 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 goal was to make it an amenity for the residents. Um what that exact programming is yet is um undetermined, but the goal is to have it as an amenity for, you know, for residents.
So to me, i- i- is that indicative that you guys are still going through a design process here? Is it your expectation that you're continuing to work through this or?
Uh, yes, I mean, we're we're the 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 early design process is is starting, um you know, in parallel with the. With the uh approvals between the Planning Commission and the zoning board. Um we don't, you know, we don't have. This is, this project is not fully programmed yet, but uh we do know that we wanna have that space active and you can see. Um if you look in the top, top left corner, uh across from, you know, current Taylor three, you see Taylor one. Um and that that does have some outdoor uh rooftop space as well.
Mm hmm. Yeah, I I guess I'm just trying to understand what your expectations are. Um for timeline and decisions at this stage. Are you telling us basically that you still have some aspects of this? That you're planning to come back to present, you know, developments on. So rooftop being one of them. Is that still something that you expect to come back and give further further, you know, design direction to us on?
Um, so I mean, there was, there was talk previously about having uh outdoor activation, having some green roof. Um, you know, we can uh uh provide some more direction on that. Um. You know, I I I don't think that we, uh if there's some some recommendations from the council, but we we have not. Uh, you know, fully program that and typically don't, I think, fully program it at this at this early stage. Um which is why, I guess, if we have, I wasn't here for Taylor one, so I don't know if that was a a topic at that time. Um. You know, but, you know, looking for uh recommendations, suggestions from the commission for consideration. We would do, but typically at this stage, that that type of space is not, is not fully programmed, other than, you know, outdoor program space.
Yeah, uh just to be transparent, I ask for for two reasons. One, because depending on what you do with the space. It it could impact how we we review uh review or perceive potential impacts of of the space on the surroundings, right? But simultaneously, uh I also wanna be, continue to be cognizant of your timeline and what you guys are trying to achieve approvals wise. You know, despite assertions that we're not cognizant of that. Uh I'm aware that you guys have funding concerns and really a goal here to try and achieve approval by. So all I'm trying to understand is, are you saying that you're early in a design process? And you're still expecting to come back through multiple iterations? Or this in your mind is just a small thing that gets finished uh in final design or final program?
I I I think the latter. I mean, to to John's point, um typically, we would uh. I I guess the question is, from a planning commission standpoint, um you know, this will be seven stories up in the air. Um it will be accessed for residents only. It's not for non-residents.
Of course.
Um, you know, this will just be a very uh low key passive space for folks to congregate. We don't want anything active happening, being that high up. So I guess the question is if if is uh is the commission thinking something greater than that? Or if there was a use outside of that for the residents that the concern or or maybe it's just some.
I think it's just making sure it's exactly that, that it is, that it is a space that's really just uh limited. That's.
Yes.
How it also, how functionally you you achieve that is kind of important. Uh visually, how that matters as well. How you achieve that kind of limit to the space and provide safety up there.
Yeah.
Um, those are the kind of angles that that we have to think through.
Yeah, I mean, I, well, I would turn to John for for safety elements, but certainly power pits and and something like on Taylor one, where we're looking at some. Um uh, you know, some screening with some some uh uh. That decorative like wood pergola type. Um a couple benches that are very close to the stairway. But not near the, not near the uh edges of the property. Um the Taylor one is a little bit of a smaller space. This will be a little bigger space. But again, just just a passive uh recreational amenity for for the residents.
Thank you.
It's gonna be safe. It's gonna be a a low scale thing. It's not gonna be like, it's not gonna be basketballs or anything weird. It's gonna be like, like. No skate. It's gonna be, the egress is gonna be uh, it's a it's a code. It's gonna be safe. It's gonna have a lot of ball protection. It's gonna have some materials.
And I would add, I think that certainly all of that, just like the um, just like the Taylor one would. Would all fall under the the building code for safety and all of that. Um but to the extent of coming back and providing some. Uh clarification on the site plan that this is passive recreation or the things that it won't have, like these, you know, high risky activities. Or anything like that, we could clarify.
Sure. From even from like a visual standpoint, we we have to assess things, just like we did with the Troy savings bank, you know, things that are. Uh amenities on the roof could be visual, there's senses to people below or just be unsightly or not fit in the character of the surroundings. I'm just giving you all the senses that we look at.
Yeah, no.
This aspect of the project.
I I appreciate and and um it it is, it is a, it is a a little bit of a lower uh design thing. I guess of maybe if if the commission has things it doesn't wanna see or like, you know, um we're okay with passive. But we wouldn't want X, Y, or Z or from a designer safety perspective, tho- those type of recommendations, I think we'd certainly welcome those.
Um and then, sorry, just one last thing on uh, you know, not, I just again wanna be cognizant of what your timeline of need is. Um is is this commission preventing you guys from moving forward right now with a HUD uh agreement or anything?
So our timeline, um uh Eric, would you mind? Um, I I I apologize, I forget what slide it is. I think it's earlier. It's it's maybe the second one on ours. Yeah, further up. Yeah, there you go. Thank you very much. Um. So I I I talked about this a little bit at our first meeting, but it was a number of months ago. So our 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 process, our goal is to um. Uh ideally start construction or close on our financing, excuse me. Um in the fall of next year and start construction in the fall of next year. I think this is a little bit of an older chart. This is Q two. We'd be looking at. Q three or Q four for on our financing. But in order to do that, we have to apply to um to the state in the fall.
Sorry, I'm not sure.
So so we're looking to uh apply for financing to the state um. Uh uh later this fall and 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 that's that's effectively our timeline for for approvals here.
So the comment made last uh during our first meeting that uh a fall approval goal still holds from us?
Yes, and and I think just to, just to, just to circle back on um the comment that Roger was making. The, you know, the uh the the process of working through the site plan with the city um and and going to the zoning board. Um, the, you know, it it seems like it's a little bit of a, in order to, in order for the planning commission, it sounded like to really make a formal opinion. It needed the approvals of the zoning board. And then we heard from the zoning board in order to make the formal uh recommendations or vote on those variances. For you to give site plan approval, they needed a negative declaration. And so uh but we do have um till the fall. Is a little bit of a.
We can always condition our site plan approval on a zoning, a necessary zoning variance being granted. Just so you know. So it's not that.
Oh, great.
It's not that you'd need our seeker to get their zoning to get our site plan.
Right.
Could give you site plan prior to.
Got it.
With a condition.
I think they do need your seeker.
For the first part.
To get the, to get the uh variance.
I was elaborating on the whole chain, not needing to be in place. Yeah. Okay, um, thank you. It just reaffirms for me that we're being sensitive to your funding timeline.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah. All right, um. Other commissioner questions? I guess I'm good for now on mine.
I've got two very quick things.
Sure.
And honestly, I'll I'll start with, the first one is is actually maybe more directed to the city. Um, the 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 applicant has a lot of uh responses about that the the the. Design, the the proposed design will achieve these standards. And so I'm just sort of wondering about, that that was, there's a number of those. About the uh architectural guidelines and um. Is is the city doing like an independent or that or doing some sort of evaluation about?
I mean. You you mean, are you referring to the ten foot setback?
Well, I'm I'm referring to a whole range of things about, you know, cornices and uh eaves and. Um, a a a number of those kinds of things. So I'm I'm trying to understand. Are we are we evaluating the validity of those responses?
Let me, let me share a thought. This this project, I I view as a replacement of an existing. Troy Housing Authority. Facility. So essentially, this project is is a re, I I'm gonna use a bad phrase here, but I'm gonna use it. It's essentially a replacement of a facility somewhat in kind. This is a substantial upgrade. Uh across the board in this in this development. If you look at the spirit of that zoning, the zoning guideline, the zoning uh the context. I view a lot of that in more of a historical area. Uh, this is a very uh sensitive area in terms of the neighborhood, Russell Sage College along the riverfront. What I, what I see of this, in my experience, uh you know, working with the city before and now and looking at other projects. I think this meets beautifully within the context of that area. I think the zoning regulations are more applicable to. Architecturally sensitive parts of the city. So. I view the architecture that's what's being proposed is far better than what exists there, including of Russell Sage College. Other dormitories, et cetera. So, and I should also point out, you had a very, very good point with respect, how does this fit in with the current plans from DOT? I think the the structure of these buildings, to to keep your mind at ease. Lies outside of the DOT and roadway configuration. So whatever, whatever course the planning board takes tonight. I think will have been accommodated within the current design. So in answer to your question, I think that the architecture of this is is in conformance with the spirit. Of 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 zoning regulations and is a substantial improvement over what exists. That's that, that's my feeling.
Thanks so much.
Okay, yeah, in fact, I I'll just weigh in. Basically, you know, we've got two eighty-five, seventy-six for architectural guidelines. Some of them are just guidelines, you know, some of them are just recommendations. Others are sort of requirements, so and.
There's a subjective role in evaluating them?
There's, I wouldn't call it subjective. We have, we have some that are actually required, you know, like transparency is a requirement. You know, for ground level, commercial and residential.
But on a guideline, for instance, but on a guideline, for instance.
A guideline, a guideline would be distinct eaves and or cornice lines should be expressed where upper body of the building meets the roof. Whereas a requirement would be large roof surfaces shall be interrupted, you know. So we've got certain specific language that dictates, you know. Certain the the architecture in accordance with what the zoning code says. And it's just that. So half of them realistically are just recommendations and guidelines and the other, you know, some, some of them are requirements. If they wanna deviate from that, they can, they can certainly request permission from the ZBA.
And on things that relate to guidelines, they don't need permission from zoning, do they? Or is that?
If they're just guidelines, no.
No, so it's something, the guidelines are there, they present their plan. I remember when you spoke to us before, you talked, you looked at the building. With AD eighteen eighty-eight and said you were trying to blend in with that with some of the features of your design. I I too think this is a vast improvement architecturally over what exists. And it is independent. The curved buildings are totally unique. They stand out and they're going to, I think it's going to be. A very positive thing. But that that being said, on the guidelines, that's something we would weigh. Um, looking at the aesthetics of the of the project and how it fits within the neighborhood, but it's not a zoning requirement. The zoning requirements, they would need to seek a variance on and we'd make a recommendation about them, one way or the other. Am I getting the process?
Yeah, uh within, within two eighty-five, seventy-six, the chapter where the architectural guidelines are found. Some of them like have legal terminology, languages that require them to adhere to those types of um principles.
Like the word show.
Right.
Just just to add to it, um when writing the zoning code, this was discussed pretty thoroughly. And then this was all obviously intentional. And one of the reasons why those guidelines are there is to help with boards. Who don't have. People with this architectural understanding. You know, we have folks like Suzanne and Sarah who can guide us. With their own knowledge of, you know, what should be done architecturally. But the guidelines are there for, for, you know, laypeople. Or whoever. So that's, I think, an important note.
Yeah, I I and I would agree with that. And I guess what I'm thinking larger than that as well, thinking about, this is an incredibly complex project. The engineering architecture. It's got. The TDMP and the transportation portion. And I'm just trying to understand, do we have a, do we have an understanding of? All of those functioning parts? When, you know, each of us has a limited understanding of these things. And I'm just, I'm just trying to articulate and trying to think through like, what what is at our disposal to in. To help us understand what's happening here, to help us understand the full breadth of all of those issues. Do we need other, do we need other entities to to weigh in on this? Is is where I'm driving it.
Like like what entity?
Yeah, do we, or do we need, do we need independent engineering? Do we need other, like, do we need? Uh, other forms of of input that are fairly standard in other municipalities? So it it's, I'm trying to drive it that question.
Well, I think, I think in this case, uh there's a lot of, a lot of entities involved. There's, there's DOT, for example. Uh. I I wanted to ask as part of the, now, as part of the, a- a- on every DOT project. There's a national, uh at the national level, there's a, there's a NIPA part. Uh you where this goes through at the Federal Highway Administration. You know, this, this, this is reviewed uh by uh, shall I say FHWA. Federal Highway Administration is is involved. The uh envi, you know, how, shall I say, SHPO, the State Historic Preservation. Well, there's a NIPA component at the national level. That's that, that's involved. Uh. I'm a structural engineer by by training. So from the standpoint of city engineering standpoint. Uh, uh planning is is, uh obviously, we work very closely together. Uh, Department of Public Utilities that I oversee, we're we're involved in that capacity. Uh, you know, La Bella, the the professional engineers at La Bella slash Jason Companies. Uh, the architect, uh Development Company.
Sir, so are you saying that we, there isn't another entity that needs to be?
Well, my my feeling is there's enough controls. What what word would I like to use? There's enough controls where life safety issues are considered, environmental issues are considered. I wanna share with you that every single DOT project that the city has been involved with, the amount of review. Done even at the federal level is 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 very substantial. So I wa- I wanted to.
Guys, we we need to.
Give the board a comfort level.
We need to keep the two topics separate. There's the highway project and there's this. We're here to review this project. If there's a discrete aspect of engineering or uh some part of this proposal that you're saying you'd like. Some more detailed reporting on, then we need to articulate that. If it's, please provide a report that further establishes. That the stormwater system is satisfactory, that the sanitary system is satisfactory, that uh SWIP is is good. Which is essentially stormwater. Uh if if it's a traffic concern or a parking concern, if there's an a utility demand. A power demand that you're concerned with, we need to break it into a discrete concept that you're saying you would want more reporting on. Does that make sense?
Sure, I just, I mean, do, we, doesn't our process, I mean, do we, do we have, you, you, I think you, you have done that? Like a, a review and do we, do we have like a report?
We have, uh, we have our system, or then just let, Roddy brought up our water center. Our system. We, we, the pipes we have in the ground vary from eighteen eleven to now. Uh, we have partnered with Camp Dresser McKee, CDM Smith. Which is also, they, they also specializes not only in water, wastewater, water transmissions, sewage. But also their bridge engineering firm. They have modeled, they've developed a mathematical model. That allows us to look at making sure our sanitary sewer is not overloaded, that our, our, our water system is not over. So. I want to reassure the board that when we have a, a bridge project of this nature. The amount of review done by state agencies. And federal, the federal agencies.
Just, I don't want you to misunderstand. I mean, like about the, the review for this project. Do we, we do have like the. Also part of the struggle here is there's a full seeker forms that we just got. Part twos and threes were just filled out today. They're just provided to us today. So we haven't had a lot of time to review them. I've looked at the other aspects of the review prior and now. So I, each individual commissioner needs to do their own review. Um, it's up to you whether you feel there's outstanding questions after.
So we got those forms today?
Yes. They were just uploaded to the Google Docs.
Okay.
Well, is it, let me ask you, is there a concern with the, with the water, the sanitary?
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm saying, this is like more of a, we're, we're getting, I'm talking about more like process and like ensuring that like there's. These issues are being evaluated, and I mean across the board. So it's just, I, I'm sure we, there's a, there's some sort of review process. And I was just trying to understand. You know. Do we look at that internal review process? Do we get a third-party review process for this project? Not, not the bridge project, that's a whole separate thing that's not really in our project.
Well, i- it just historically, um, we've always, I mean, when I was here for a ten-year duration. Always handled that internally. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So you, you're satisfied from an engineering perspective that the sanitary system in the area is adequate?
Yes.
You're satisfied that the municipal water system is adequate?
Yes.
You're satisfied that the drainage system is adequate?
Yeah, and may I say, may I say, may I define why, bear in mind, this is a replacement of an existing. Troy Housing Authority, the system of the same magnitude.
Sure, sure. Has the fire department reviewed and Alfred any more comments that need to be satisfied?
They have, they have not.
Police department. That, that's.
They, they have not what?
They have not made any additional comments other than what they provided.
Great.
I know that the fire department has looked at this project closely, uh, and that the developer has made certain modifications. So that their, their equipment will function properly in connection with this. And they are now satisfied with the project, with the redesigned elements that they recommended.
Great.
I, cause I attended a meeting.
Yeah, there was a discussion about, uh, potentially closing off. The other entrance on front and creating infrastructure that the fire department could still access, uh. That driveway, correct?
Correct, yeah. So originally, we weren't gonna have a connection to Front Street. But then knowing that there could be a timeframe between something like that taking place where it became a pedestrian way. They needed to still maintain the, maintain access to the rear of the building. That was important. We then in turn created those two access points along Front Street, which. If Front Street becomes a pedestrian way, we can very easily adapt so that they can have a, a barrier gate. That allows them to be able to come in and out. If they ever needed to respond to the rear of the building, they don't necessarily would have to. Put Knox boxes on both sides of the building. So we got rear entrance and front entrance. That's something that the fire department was looking for. So we could, we could cover both sides of the building, especially seeing that there's timelines of like, maybe when projects are built or not built, right? We, we have the ability to be serviced from both sides.
I, I should also point out that we have a substantial review process internally. Uh, in which there's quite a few people at these meetings to go over every single project and especially this.
Oh, excellent. No, I mean, I, I mean, this is all good news. Have you engaged the material companies like National Grid?
Yeah, so we've, we've started going through our load letters and everything now. Um, we had gone through that process directly across the street. When the Taylor One project had started.
Sure.
Um, so we've kind of plowed the road per se as to what we have for infrastructure over in that area.
When you engage them on Taylor One, did you consider, uh, the, basically the total occupancy and load of, of the full, you know. Timeline of all three buildings going?
So they've, they reviewed the Taylor One project or the infrastructure specific to that.
Okay.
They're gonna be doing the same type of thing here with the transformers and everything we have adjacent to this site. So we'll have a very similar. Path for getting the, um, the, the, uh, power to the buildings. The power is there, it's just a matter of do we need switchgear or not at the buildings? Um, and that's something that, as we go through the mechanical process with the engineers, with, uh, with them. Will, um, will be able to get those.
My question is more so, does the, uh, supplying substation really have the capacity for it?
Yes, I got you. And we didn't get any indication of that being a problem previously. The, the buildings are there today, you know, so, you know.
Buildings are there, but the load isn't. The occu- you have one occupied building versus three in the future. Taxing, I'm sure, the same substation.
Understood. And once again, we'll be providing all the load letters and everything to the power company to go through that process. And if there's upgrades that are needed, like they were for Taylor, um, one with, uh, switchgear and such, those will be incorporated into what we need to do.
I should also point out that that's part of the, uh, Lower Congress Ferry Street reconstruction. Uh, which was conducted, um, about fifteen years ago. That was a seven point five million dollar renovation of both. Uh, water, sanitary, storm, paving, electrical grid and natural gas. And that actually extended up into Upper Congress Street. It was a four and a half million dollar, uh, expansion.
So I have a question for the applicant. Back to architecture, which we didn't really, we got sidetracked. Um, just want to know if this presentation is the same as in May, as far as the façades, materials. Height setbacks, windows.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify if there was a change. And also, I would like to also, from anyone who knows. What are the variances that they're seeking from zoning?
They were detailed, um, I think in, partially in this, um, staff notes set, as well as in the last month. Uh, there's a series of different side setbacks. A lot of them discussed at the prior meeting are driven off, uh, easement considerations. Basically, um, dictating where the building ends up. For instance, um, the street. To building setback, um, on the, what would that be? The river street side. Gets influenced by the current infrastructure of the ramp. Which causes the need for a variance. Am I saying that right? So basically, because of the current road infrastructure, they can't conform in some of those, some of those aspects.
And the, and the bridge retaining walls.
That said, I would say the applicant has not demonstrated why they need the story setback. Uh, that's required for the resilient waterfront overlay, uh, considerations. There's some that are just born of the site considerations and some that. I'm not sure why they need the variance yet.
Okay, all I ask, because this, unless I'm wrong, are the staff notes public record?
Yes.
They can be made public record.
I'm just asking if I'm the tax. And I'm following the project, I'm not a commissioner. Might be nice to know what the variances are.
You have a, a staff report, do you know?
I have it, but there's fifty-four thousand people that might.
They're welcome to.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, another architectural consideration or programming feature I had inquired about at the last meeting was balconies. Um, was that something you considered and where did you land on that?
We haven't, we haven't dug back into those details yet.
Okay, so, and is that another thing that should suggest to us that you plan to come back for further iterations of, of review?
I'm not sure how to answer that question right now. Uh, I want to get back to you.
Okay.
I think it depends on how the zoning board.
Yeah, we, we need, we need, uh, the, to have an understanding of the zoning board. For some of the, for some of the topics that you, that you mentioned, like the ten foot setbacks and things along those lines. So depending on how some of that plays out, we could very well be back here with some additional changes, um, to the plan. So I would, I would say it's fair that you're gonna see the drawing again, is, is, is what I would say.
Okay. Thank you.
Should we expect some more? Renderings as well next time, come back?
Yeah, is there, is there specific, uh, James, that, any, any specific rendering that you're looking for? We can try to work those into anything we bring.
I, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, all we have is the broader aerial and then just the elevations, right?
Just the elevations, color it up, yeah.
I also, at the last meeting, had discussed a, like, visual study from the river level. I don't see that in here either.
Yes, we, we are preparing those now. They're not ready yet. Um, but we'll keep, we can come back to you with those.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else?
And we also had discussed at one point. Visual barriers around the, maybe on top of the parapet, somehow hiding some of the mechanical equipment. Whether it's something you looked at. I don't really know the sightlines, I'm just seeing a flat elevation. So I don't know if that's a concern or something you've looked at.
It is a concern. We don't have those, we don't have that degree of detail designed yet. We know there's gonna be rooftop equipment. Where it's gonna be. Our intent is to not have it be painted green or yellow. So that is our intent is to not have it be visible.
Thank you.
Apologies if my prior response to you came off as dismissive. There wasn't meant to be. I was only saying, I know that they were outlined there. I was just trying to point you in the right direction.
Oh, I know.
Well, just on that note, I think.
Believe me, I'm not offended by much.
I, I just would add that, you know, if you want Eric to publish them, you can just ask him. Yeah, I think it's. Didn't have.
You're whispering, James?
I'm just saying, you made a comment about want fifty-four thousand people not having access to them. And you could, you could just simply ask Eric to publish them, and I'm sure he'd be willing to do that. So I, I didn't.
This is more a general process question.
Okay.
Since I'm new to this.
Thank you.
I think it'd be helpful to go through some of the, uh, pedestrian infrastructure on the site. So it looks like along the, where the ramps are and maybe will continue to be, um, you know, those are.
Yeah.
Lo- lowering grade, right? Um, by, by quite a bit, especially as you go closer to the bridge.
Right, okay, I'm sorry, James. I, just can you repeat? I, I'm trying to.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's a significant grade change as you kind of go closer to the bridge to further away from the bridge, correct?
Um, okay, in between the building, I just want to make sure we have our point.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna go to the screen, sorry.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. All good, I know, it's, it's frustrating.
It's late, so.
Yep.
Um, James, I'm assuming you're, you're talking about in here?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, cause it kind of works on both, you know, the same way, right? Like as you, and, and so is the. Kind of, uh, meandering of that to address the grade change, or is that for another reason?
I think it was, we wanted to try and create some space in there. So the grade change is not terrible there right now, actually. Because we, we have, um, sidewalks currently, so. But there will be some grade elevations and such that we need to, to improve upon there, especially as we get closer to the intersections. Um, but the idea of maybe creating that, the serpentine there was so that we could create some pockets of space. Be able to, you know, set some trees and things like that in there, instead of it just being just that straight sidewalk through there. But if you have some sug- suggestion of like, if you wanted it a little shaped differently, we're, we're open to those types of things. It's just something that we had. Envisioned to kind of create some space along the ro- the route.
I was just mostly trying to understand the intent, but I think, I think it could, you know, the meandering or whatever, serpentine, whatever you want to call it, I think it could be charming. Um, it looks like it tapers from kind of the, the intersections at the corners. And then it slightly tapers in with, uh, as you get closer to the bridge. Sorry, I, I'm trying to describe both sides.
You're, you're okay, you're, so, so. Here out in front, it'll just be similar to the street views that you see today of a sidewalk. That's, you know, pretty much the extent of the front there. With some street trees, as then traverses and goes around the site. Um, you know, it'll be, um, that serpentine that we spoke of. Um, so are you talking about like up in here where the transitions?
Yeah, I just want to talk about the widths and so.
Okay, yeah, so as we get closer to the intersection, um, we, we are kind of following the pavement. And sidewalk and such that's out there, um, in those areas. But if you feel that we need to make an adjustment or something, we'll have to blend that area. That's, that's kind of that transition zone. So what we're showing now today, on our plan here would work for now. In the future, if. They move the sidewalk a little bit, we'll have to adjust to ours a little bit, um, but. For the most part, um, what you have here is it's just a little wider at the intersections.
Uh-huh, and I don't see those, maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see the widths. Uh, shown here. Are they on the?
On the, on the, on the, you mean the, the actual dimension of it? Okay, um, we can get those on there. I don't, I don't have, I don't have them off the top of my head, right? There, James, but we can, we can add them to there.
I think, just to be straightforward, I think that having the, the entirety, right? Especially if you're gonna have this serpentine or there is a gradual grade change, you know, it'd be nice to have them as quite wide.
Agreed.
So something like eight feet, I think would be ideal on that.
We'll take, we'll take a look at the lifts in there and how they transition and connect in.
Okay.
Yeah, abso- absolutely.
Thank you. Um, and then just going on the other side of the structure, um, you know, Eric did mention this in the staff notes that we'd be. And I, I agree that we would be looking for sidewalk connections across any driveways, so.
Yeah, can we just clarify that real quick?
Yeah.
I just, I, I get confused by that comment each time, so.
Well, it's shown on the aerial view, um, which is interesting, but it's not shown on the site plan or on this view. So if you go to the aerial view, Eric.
And I have a, well, I also have a question on that view too, once. Before we move off.
So you can see, um, towards the left, uh, that corner of the cur- the curved corner. You can see how the sidewalk continues across the driveway.
This, this here?
That one, but also on the, the other one, yeah. Um, so that's not shown on the site plan. It's shown as asphalt on the site plan. We would like it to be concrete.
Now I understand what your, your comment is, okay.
I would go, I would continue to say even at the, uh, entrances to the. Wherever, wherever the walking paths and the driving paths are intersecting essentially. Right now, on the site plan, it's always asphalt. And so I would like it to always be, uh, pedestrian oriented, so it would always be concrete. And if there's a grade change, especially, you know, looking at the building on the right. The lower left corner of it, right? Uh, so building on the right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, the building on the, the lower left corner of that driveway, when it goes into the, uh, parking garage underneath the structure.
Here.
Right, like if there's a grade change there, the grade change should be for the vehicles, not for the pedestrians. That's what I, I would, I'd like to see that on the site.
Okay, we do have grading for that area, so we made sure that we have, you know, landings for those crosswalks in there, so. Uh, but we're happy to, happy to detail that up a little bit more if you need it.
Thanks.
Yeah, no worries.
I'm just making the different views consistent.
Right.
Yeah, this view needs to agree with the, with the rendering where it did show.
And then the last thing is, uh, the sidewalk ends, last thing on the pedestrian road is, the, the sidewalk ends, uh, the bottom right there. You know, it doesn't go around the playground.
I think that's what you were saying, to match the rendering would be that sidewalk in that area. So we'll, we'll, I, you know, I think that's going to what you were saying with respect to crossing the entrances, okay?
Just wanted to be clear.
I appreciate that, so. I appreciate that. So we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at those, those areas for, for the, for the commission here and, and when we get back, we'll, we'll have a, an updated drawing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did you want to jump in, Eric, I can?
Uh, it's on the same note. So if we could go back to the aerial view. So speaking to, yes, right in here, the grade change that James is talking about, if we look at the northern building and you see the triangular green space. In my understanding or reading the rendering, right, that that triangle of green space is at a much higher elevation than the sidewalk path that's following the curvature of the building down to Front Street.
It could be.
Depending on what the DOT does, in other words.
If this wall shaved back a little bit, we'll probably have a little bit of green space on the bottom, but then what the rest of their program is up there, I know that there's talk about bus stops at that intersection. So I don't, I don't have those. So those are those program spaces as part of their plan that I don't, I don't have the answers to, right?
I'm trying to put my, myself in the mind of, or in the eyes of the pedestrian going down that and what is on my left hand side as I'm walking downhill towards the river? Is it a, is it a big retaining wall on my left? You know, it, it's just what's there now, in other words, right?
It's a change of limits of their property, it's. Yeah, but, but the, the, the building, there, you know, there, there would be a corridor that's there as we have our sidewalk going.
So maybe in the view study or in the renderings, that would be a good area to focus in on too.
Okay.
Between the buildings. Okay, other commissioner comments?
I've got one quick one and Roger, I want to first of all, thank you for tackling the, the street parking in the TDNP. I do have one additional comment to that, which is you know, similar, similar to another applicant's TDNP that is divorced tonight. They approached, they approached that on street in a, in a more quantitative manner and looking at spaces, looking at usage. And you know, given, given the instructions, it's for the TDNP in the code, I do think that that would be appropriate to add it to, to this TDNP. I don't think it's necessary for, you know, to qualify for like seeker or anything like that. I think this is just a matter of like, the TDNP process is kind of a new process under our code. So we're just trying to like, make sure that we uphold a, a similar standard.
And we'll do, and we can add a paragraph or so to, to the TDNP about that. The one thing though, I'll just note, when we looked at the time parking on Congress Street right now, historically, underutilized. If you had gone through that area, James, you're done, as you know, underutilized in there. Right now, construction workers are utilizing that. So I, I go out there and say what the percentage is, there's no space there available. However, when we, we get, you know, through the construction project, we may see this revert back to those levels. And it being timed does, does help us a little bit for the commercial use that, that we specifically targeted at that corner. I'll do my best to, to get that in there, but, but.
It's, it's taken. Yeah, I'm not even like trying to get something out of you for, in particular, it's, I just want to try to like have like a consistent, you know, standard. And I also recognize that River Street with the unknowns there, I, I don't really have any, I don't, I really don't know what to tell you because it's, we don't have a whole lot of information about what, what that would look like and what the, the parking situation will be. This is just a matter of like, I just want to make sure that like.
Consistent, yeah, yeah. And, and, yeah, so my colleague is here tonight, you happen that, so I'm definitely familiar with the TDNP as well on that one, so, thank you.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
I just want to reiterate, thank you so much for making such a good effort to tuck some of the parking within the building footprints as well. I know it's a very tricky site.
We might, and we're still, we're still looking at that. We're going to try to see what else we can do. We've added some other different things to the parking, scooter parking, which is a little different. It's not in the code, but we, we're like looking at some of those niche spaces in the garage to try and find those spots. So just a few different things.
I second that one. Here, here, it's a testament that this process works. We asked you guys to take a look at the spatial layout and the arrangement. It's clear that you guys made modifications to it and project and the design is better for it.
Uh, one last, one more thing, the pedestrian infrastructure, the, the.
Eric, can you, sorry, can, can you pull up back to it?
Oh, yeah, any, I think this slide is probably, it doesn't matter, either way. I just want you to look at the corner radii a little bit more closely next time as well and see if there's anything you can tighten up. And I understand that there are probably things on here for the fire department.
Definitely are, yeah.
And I would ask if you could consider more look into multiple, multiple curve or anything else that would discourage the everyday user from driving and taking turns more quickly, but would allow a fire trucker, some other emergency vehicle to, you know, still access the site.
Just again, just so I, I got your comment. So you're just, you're talking about just on those interior edges and things like that, you want, you want to see them tightened up or?
Yeah, yeah, ideally. So especially along Front Street, you know, those, this, this looks like they're a little bit tighter than they are on the site plan. And yeah, it's just allowing people to take turns more quickly. And so I know, I know that needs to be preserved for delivery vehicles and fire, fire vehicles, but yeah, if you could look into multiple curve.
Yep, we'll, we'll look at, we'll look at what we can do to tighten those up, for sure.
Um, you guys have a landscape architect with you tonight?
Not tonight, but we do have, we do have WRT landscape architects are on this pod. So if there's some comments that you have, I can relay them to you, but they did provide a, a tree palette. And if you would like to provide any comments regarding the tree palette, I'm happy to take those back because there might be a few in there that we got to switch. I get it, so.
Okay, great, yeah. My, my comments are just, you know, we'd like to see more different, diverse plants than, you know, we see red maples, we see river birch pretty much every time and a couple of zelkovas. I mean, we don't have a ton of zelkovas in Troy, but we have, they're all over the place.
It's a great plant for urban environment.
Not bad. I mean, honey lookers are too, but do we need any more honey lookers in Troy? No. Um, so yeah, just something, something different. I would prefer to see larger shade trees than, than zelkovas and red maples, but I would, I'm not a landscape architect. I also have no comments on any of the smaller plants, so.
Okay, thanks.
My last comment attached to planting is, I think that, that your, your diversity is, is pretty good with the noted comments from the expert over here.
I mean, I'm not an expert.
But the, the comment is actually not for the applicant itself. I just, I, I can see the applicant is going to put in a lot of work, a lot of money, a lot of investment into, into this. And I'm hoping that the Troy Housing Authority has a plan for maintenance in the long term. So that's not even a comment directed at you. This is just, I'm hoping that Troy Housing Authority has that, that in place so that this investment, this really valuable investment doesn't hurt.
Yeah, and as part of, as part of this partnership, Penrose management team will be managing a lot of those, those elements or all those elements.
Excellent, I'd love to hear it.
And my comment about diversity wasn't that there wasn't enough variation, just that these are the.
The same one.
No, I'm, I'm working.
Every month.
James, they have, there was a list that was put out at one point, so we happen to follow that list quite a bit, so.
Okay, um, we were, we set this agenda for a public hearing today, did we not? Noticed it as such.
Yeah. I believe you did.
Yes.
Yeah, you set a public hearing for this, for this one.
Um, I will open the floor for public comment and I think we'll keep it open. I mean, anyone here from the public speak on this item? Nobody? Come on in. If you would just start with your name and address.
Hello everyone, my name is Nathana Gooden PE. I am, live at 2006 Avenue, both a consultant, but I also live in Troy, so I live by Uncle Sam's. Uh, I would say that these types of projects I think are great. I think by offering more space and green space for residents and also bringing more residents to Troy. We just had a talk about the Troy City Savings Bank and kind of bringing light into downtown. Um, I would say that something to may consider is, you know, probably not on the applicant, I mean, the applicant is doing a lot and I commend them for that, but also thinking about the street that faces the river. I think that is something of an improvement. You have the boat that docks right there that does some cruises and people get off right there and it's just by a parking garage. Um, I ride my bike, you probably may have seen me cruising around sometimes, but I ride my bike down there and I feel that it's just kind of a desolate space. And though the residents are going to have that green space, it's blocked off by a road that is just, you know, traffic across the river. So I would say that's something to maybe consider. I think it's a great project. I think that, you know, with preserving our riverfront, there is an opportunity there. You're going to have a lot of residents and a lot of activity down there to, to revitalize it. So just want to say that.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else in the audience for a comment? Anyone on Zoom who wanted to speak about the Taylor two project? Use the raise hand function, please.
No one on Zoom.
Okay. So not to say if we were to close public comment that we couldn't reopen it.
I, I think it's worth noting that the applicant stated in their application, the, that the, as the project advances, so too will some of the design features. So, you know, we don't know what the ZBA might come back and allow or not allow, but it would be presumed that this design, the site plan, building is going to probably take some different variation at some point and the public should have an opportunity to weigh in on that final rendition. So it would probably be wise to at least maintain the public comment.
As a matter of procedure though, could we take action on seeker prior to closing public comment?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, I think seeker, well, I mean, from my understanding, seeker has to, usually gets done first and foremost, you know, procedurally it's supposed to be addressed like early on.
Yeah, in this case it hasn't been, but, so. Generally, when a seeker determination is preceded by a period of public comment. Okay, and you have done that. So I don't see any reason that you could not act on the seeker and still allow future public Absolutely, that was. Future public comment for, to, especially since the design is still not finalized.
Yeah, we've just run into instances before where when a seeker determina, determination has already been made, the public still sometimes has seeker related issues that they bring to us when the seeker determination has already happened.
Right, uh, those, those issues are for, then for Article 78.
Right. Okay, um, so that said, we have had public comment. Are there other issues commissioners have or do you feel prepared to make a determination? We also should make a recommendation to ZBA on variances.
I, I think we can go forward with seeker.
I feel the same, okay. Okay, then can I have a motion to that end? I'll make a motion to declare a negative declaration for seeker. Thank you. Thank you. I will go one by one for a vote. One?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Vote to Meg. Meg Duck. Um, okay, and then as for site plan, I think that's, there's still some work to be done. I think specifically you've heard some things about visual studies. We'd love to see revisions to pedestrian amenities. I would really appreciate if at the next meeting you do have some confirmation from the National Grid from the, or the Power Utility Committee.
We can, we have.
For a record.
Yeah, for a record, sure. We are working through the Willser, our, our load lettering now, so we'll be able to get that to them. And then that'll initiate the process. We might not have like the final.
Yep.
Improvements, but we'll at least have something for you.
Okay, uh, some other items to discuss a little further or have progressed a little more to a final point would be the rooftop programming or just the shaping of what that's going to look like. So we can understand visually how that, how that works and also functionally. Um, and then there, I think should be some more discussion about the building, the story setbacks and the balcony topic.
Yes, we're, we're happy to, hopefully we get a little bit more clarity too at the ZBA on the setback. There's a little bit of back and forth there.
And to make clear where those comments, especially the last two come from, it's how the building interacts with the waterfront for me.
Okay.
That's what drives that.
Fair, thank you.
How the residents or people on the water for that matter really are going to experience the building. Okay, otherwise we would need a motion to table this and then timing wise, so you have your secret determination, which means you can get the zoning board's action.
Yes, thank you very much for that.
So I was originally concerned that there would be hesitancy about doing that and I was going to offer a special meeting and check with the commissioners on it, but it seems now you can just follow the typical meeting schedule and be back on for, would you be ready for an August meeting?
Well, I don't think so, just timing because we are on the ZBA, I think we need that answer back from the ZBA because then I wouldn't, what if something.
You have to react to their comments.
Yeah, so I think it would be, we're, we're, I don't think we will be able to have that information until after that ZBA meeting.
So would you like us to take it to September or indefinitely?
I'd, no, I think September is fair. I will turn to my, September, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, no's.
The question was, what would the deadline be?
The deadline for us, this meeting would be September 3rd. Excuse me, excuse me, sorry, I missed the picture. August 27th.
I'm sorry, August 27th.
August 27th.
Okay.
Uh, I, I think it, I believe it's, I believe it's August 7th.
July meeting, it just, July, ZBA happens before you, and so that's, that's where.
No quorum.
Correct.
So when September works?
What's the date of the September meeting, Eric?
18th.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table P O P C 2024 0008 for September 18th.
I'll second.
Do we want to, or need to make recommendations? We can still do that as a, I guess, that's outside of the agenda item, but, okay, moving to a vote on in favor. I, okay, we can still make a recommendation as a separate action. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time tonight.
Um, well, let's get through the other items and then we could do a motion. Stephen was bringing up the recommendation to zoning and making fun of motion on that. I'd suggest for the other applicants, we go through those and then we can make a motion.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Rick, is that, that may be unorthodox. Does it present any actual issue to make a, to make a motion as ZBA regarding an application that we just tabled?
No, I, the only concern I might have is that the applicant, if the applicant wanted to speak on it, they would be able to.
That's fair. Just to be clear, we plan, we are done formally, but full awareness, we still plan to do a, a recommendation to zoning. And so if you wanted to hear or speak to that, we're going to do it later in the meeting.
If you want to plug your US.
Uh, we have two, how many more items or three more items to add? It's going to be a while.
So you don't have concern, but.
My concern is that they don't grant the story setback.
Right, I mean, do you have concerns about?
That would be my only recommendation. The others I'd be, I'd be fine recommending that they accept.
Oh, you want the story setback?
Yes, okay.
Yes, okay.
Well, if that's, if that's the only one, why don't you? Everything that you submitted to me is.
Put my cards on the table. I'm I'm fairly indifferent to all of them. So I I could be persuaded one way or another, but I'm I'm pretty. I'm pretty agnostic to it more, which.
Agnostic?
Make your motion.
To do what? To approve? Do you have any issues even with the stories setback? Doesn't bother you? It's fine if it doesn't, just.
Sure.
I think if it were a more traditional rectangular, you know, would feel more strongly about it, especially since it's a newer thing, but curvature and everything is.
Okay, then bring. Us to the architectural recommendations anyway.
Yeah.
It's kind of like. I realize one is requires an order of variance, but well, you know, if you read the code and then you looked at this building, you know, there's a lot of things that we've it's a special site, a special condition.
So I'll make a motion that we recommend to the ZBA that they approve the variances for the Taylor project.
Bill, do you, do you understand what's happening right now?
Uh, I think you're talking about the the different variances in the Taylor apartments.
Correct.
And and that was just a whole motion to approve all of. Yeah. Occasion by fatigue or or or.
I I'd like to keep us moving, but I I've I've given it thorough thought. I think it's.
I think that.
My concern just.
It's a second, yes.
Thanks, Rex.
Keep us, keep us.
Okay. Uh. We'll go one by one. We want moving to a vote. One. Yes. Suzanne. James.
Yes.
Steven, yes, I will vote no. You're the ones.
They just recommended that the ZBA uh improve the variances.
There's a motion to recommend approval and it passed. The motion, motion was brought by James and seconded by, who was the second? Bill? Okay.
So.
And it passed six, six one, I was the one, the one, oh, five, sorry, five one. Getting late.
Okay, I'm very sorry to thank you.
Um, please, and thank you. Well, P C twenty twenty four zero zero two four two thirty second street. I apologize for our decorum.
Uh, no problem at all. All right, my name's Barb Nelson, director at TAP Inc. Um, TAP Inc. is the sole owner of Saint Gene LLC, the owner of two thirty second street. It's actually two thirty through two four is a series of addresses. Am I good? Um. So in response to uh our national statewide housing crisis, the state uh funding agencies for affordable housing are making um some very nice resources available to build affordable housing. Um, our proposal here is to construct uh two new buildings, uh one that faces second street, you see, and one that sort of sits on the alley. Um, and these will be condominiums of that will be available to families who uh meet the income limitations of less than eighty percent of the area median income, uh which is a good workforce um salary. Um, so this is just a sketch plan review. This is just for information, orientation, sharing, uh getting us on your radar. There's no action that we're, we've asked of you, we ask of you tonight. Um, we are in a mixed use district, neighborhood floor. Uh, we have fashioned the um the street facing buildings to be uh in accordance with the the zoning guidelines of staying uh have street level facades. We are in a resilient waterfront overlay, blood risk overlay. Um, what you see are the the two buildings front on a courtyard. And from both second street and from the alley, one can access that courtyard through what you see is uh a pathway that is gangway cut through the building. It's about uh, the one is about eight, nine feet wide, the one in back is about six feet wide. Um, so all of the courtyard in the middle there is is raised up and the first floor level of every uh unit is raised up of uh two feet above floodplain. So we have it's, so it's maybe it's three feet up uh uh to the back there. Um, there will be thirty units uh in these combined in these two buildings. Um, as I said, there'll be condominiums, there'll be homeowner uh occupied. Uh, we have a variety of um studio, one, two, and three bedroom units. Uh, the three and two bedroom units generally are two stories, so you only carry your groceries up to one floor. There's your living room, dining room, and then you go up the next floor to bedrooms. Uh, the second street building will also have the opportunity uh for roof decks for those internal stairs can continue through the, just for you, Ronnie. No, we think it's a great idea. Uh, it's gonna make a more marketable, more sale. Um, so this is a major uh piece of construction. It's um looking like fourteen million dollars. We have a contract to purchase the little building on the corner there and to we have not purchased it yet, so it's not really part of this review, but we hope to come back with full site plan and showing you that that's part of the project. Um.
Which which bill is, sorry?
A little white bill.
Oh, okay. Yep.
Little two-story building. Um, the first floor is is commercial and we would hope to keep that as commercial as a meeting space um for everyone in the development. Um, Leslie's Garden um is a lot that we owned and maintained. Um, gosh, for about eleven years, uh so that will become part of the uh whole development and will um it'll it'll flow, it'll become part of the the recreational space available to the condominium owners. Um, we also are applying for money to renovate school ten apartments. That's the large older school building at the top of your screen. Um, and again, they'll share amenities uh with this development. Uh, it's time for it to have an elevator. It needs new kitchens and and uh it will be electrified. And we are seeking passive house, we're designing for passive house certification for the new construction. Um, so the state um their A HOP program, Affordable Home Ownership Opportunities Program, um gives us a subsidy per unit and a and an additional subsidy if we meet the passive house standards. We have about point eight acres, adds up to about thirty units per acre. Um, if you tabulate the exact same acre on between third street in the alley, um, that's about twenty eight units an acre. Um, the the same acreage across second street is about twenty seven units an acre. Um, this approach is the result of um neighborhood concern that um that some developer might come in and build something that is five or six stories or however many stories would be allowed and that it would be rental and it would be double loaded corridor. Um, and so we have um, so we show instead of one tall building, we have split the two with the courtyard in the middle. Um, let's go to a couple of the perspectives, see what. Oh, so the parking um in the alley, we have just fourteen spaces and it tucks in under the building. As you can see here, so the alley is here, we park underneath it, we ramp up into the into the courtyard. So we've, we're limited to fourteen spaces, um but no spaces are required. Um, and we have submitted a T D M P, my civil site engineer, Nate Gooden is here, if you have any questions um in that regard. Uh, we'll probably be developing stormwater retention in our courtyard space since we're raising up the elevation there. Questions?
It is amazing what can be done with some creative vision, good space.
Thank you. Um, go to it.
One of the things that jumps to mind, especially you just mentioning retention and uh stormwater, the the courtyard, I'm, for lack of a better word, is fair to call it a courtyard space, uh interior to the buildings and garage space. Um, I have an idea for that, which would be to use um like grass pavers in that space, which should help cut off, uh cut down on your impervious uh coverage or impermeable area. Um, and it'd be really nice to see like even just gravel paths where you show the uh corridors from alley to courtyard or street to courtyard there or going through the space.
They have to be completely accessible. We have accessible wheelchair accessible units on anything on grade level. Even though on the on the second street side, you have a stoop and steps, but those first floor units are wheelchair accessible from the back.
Okay.
But we'll, you will absolutely see um permeable paving, we'll see some raised plant beds, a little garden shed. Um, just about every unit has either its its roof deck or a patio balcony. Um, we do have a a possibility of some green roof. You can see there a little green shading because we've kind of stepped the
Awesome.
Step the building back to get more light into the courtyard. Um, the alley building is likely if we, if we um work uh photovoltaics into the project, it'll be on the alley building because the second street building will have those units that that can have.
Checking all the boxes, creative use.
I listened to a lot of presentations.
Um, I I also like the idea of putting some planter spaces in. I mean, in my mind, that that makes sense, kind of uh following almost the perimeter of the building, having at least some spots to have uh the tenants, you know, be able to do landscaping, their own personalized landscaping in those in those space. Um.
Can you go through to perspective five? That's the one at the end. In the courtyard, there we go. So here you see how we're stepping up from Leslie's Garden up to that that thirty or thirty-six inch level uh to meet the flood zone. And so everyone's entrances um come from here as as well as the five units that have entrances with stoops.
We don't have that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
This one I.
Yeah, this is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We do have this? Oh, I'm looking at it.
I downloaded them, yeah, I downloaded them, I don't know, a couple of days ago and didn't have this here.
We sent out an email.
Yeah, you just updated it, right?
Just recently.
So it, can I just ask, is this space um just for the folks who are living there or is this, it is, it's not public space?
Right, so those um passageways from the street and from the alley, they'll have gates with locks, nice.
Metal elevation.
Metal gates.
Where could you go to the elevation? Yeah, right there. Could you zoom in on the bottom one is second street, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, so this is the gateway through.
And the building is overbuilt across that path?
Yes, yes.
I I really like that design.
Well, the proof is in the numbers. When the developer is her own architect, it's a little dangerous, but so far the numbers are coming through pretty well. So the the street facade of second street will be on masonry. The masonry will wrap a good, I don't know, ten or fifteen feet or the side. Um, the courtyard surfaces will have some masonry on the bays and the and the extensions of the building, but um the main walls in the courtyard will be a lighter color, a little brighter, it'll probably be a metal panel, rain screen kind of thing.
I think these kind of courtyard spaces add so much character to a city. Um, I I've I've brought it up in previous planning commission meetings, you know, I've had the, you know, um pleasure and luxury privilege to do some traveling and when I've gone to some European cities and specific, I remember going to uh Copenhagen. Uh, there's a lot of these throughout the city. There's these little uh exactly like that, an entrance that goes through a building space into a courtyard that the entire community that lives in those buildings uses, gets to form relationships in and it it's just really nice, but I'm very curious to hear James' take too, because we've talked about courtyards.
You have to just go to Queens. There's many examples of this, Jackson Heights, Forest Hills Gardens and Sunny Side Gardens.
Yeah.
Looks identical to this done in nineteen twenty. The same exact massing courtyard punch throughs. So you're channeling your nineteen seventeen.
I'd just like to say, I think it's a wonderful project.
Thank you.
I like all aspects of it.
Thank you.
I just have one little question. Have you decided what kind of harness is gonna go on there yet?
Something fairly simple. Um, it's probably um, no, we haven't.
Okay, I'll take that.
Um, but it will emulate, uh, of course, it won't be extremely heavy. Um, again, we're kind of aiming for simplicity. Um, the bay windows will probably be the same metal panel that we see on the majority of the courtyard side. Um, now, do you have?
That's real, those are real elements too, the the bump outs or.
Yeah, those are base. Those are base. There may be two, couple of feet, yeah, two feet out, if I can afford it, some windows on the side. But there you can see, yeah.
Will you just zoom out when when we're, before you're changing the page?
We'll have a bicycle storage space with a little repair bench.
Are you, is Leslie's Garden now publicly accessible?
Yeah.
Or is it sort of this gray?
It was, it's it's privately owned. Um, it was expressly for the use of our school ten tenants. And then we found that they weren't a- actually using it much. We just decided to take the lock off it a couple of years ago, maybe, maybe twenty sixteen. Um, and we have a volunteer group of neighbors who do maintenance there as well as the um volunteers from Master Gardeners. Um, recently, we have one dog owner who has disrespected the place terribly, so we recently put a lock on it and said everything's got to get restored. We had branches pulled off trees. It was really ugly. Um, it will be incorporated and will be owned by the condominium corporation in the long run.
Have you considered potentially bigger changes to the garden uh in a, in an effort to make it more useful?
Well.
I think it it is inherently more useful now that it's connected to this bigger, but I think it's it's a piece of the puzzle that is flexible. If if, I mean, I don't know, like the community dynamic, like the folks who take care of it and how they would feel about that, but I would encourage you to consider that in as you continue to tweak the design. Uh, in my mind, it's one of the elements that is still flexible and uh
Sure.
And maybe if you, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying if you put a structure there and you had a green space elsewhere, it would be better, but you know, it's something to think about.
Well, it is a memorial uh garden dedicated to Leslie Adler who passed away. She was a housing advocate and the volunteers who keep track of it and take care of it are very possessive about the plants. Um, one thing we have had to do, and I don't think it impacts the garden much, uh the fire department, we sat with them. They wanted this uh portion of the alley widened to twenty-six feet so that they could pull a truck in there and they wanted this radius cleaned up or widened out. Um, which you'll see in the site plan when it's submitted, but but I could also see a, you know, a nice gazebo there. I could see a um, you know, piece of play equipment. Um.
Yeah, I mean, just on, uh, Stephen exchanging uh
Doing what?
Grunts or whatever. It's just like, I I obviously disagree with that uh approach to increasing the, like, I understand obviously the need for emergency vehicle access, but I don't think that's the way to do it. I think you could just as easily restrict parking on the. Emergency vehicle access, but I don't think that's the way to do it. I think you could just as easily restrict parking on the corner, which would effectively. Should be a very easy way to do that and cheaper. Um, and also not increase the crossing with pedestrians. Um, and yeah, I hear you on, on the sensitivity of that and the, you know, it being respectful to.
Only if it works though. I mean, as we, if we. Managed to purchase that building, you know, we'll look at how that impacts, how the use of that floor impacts opening out to the garden, that kind of thing.
Do you have the elevation of the backside of the? Second street structures?
It's pretty plain. And I was surprised to hear that the fire engines do not use the alleys.
To the backside of the second street?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, or, or the.
So, so the backside of second street, you come through the, the access there and you walk into one of three. Uh, foyers and from there you access four different apartments. Six different apartments. Four of them upstairs, two of them downstairs.
So if you're a resident and you. Why would you need to go through the gate? What, what?
If you parked on second street, you'd want to go through the gate up.
The alley structures?
Right, get your mail, get in, come into the courtyard and then into your.
The main entrance to the units is with it from the courtyard versus street side.
Okay, so there's no, are, are there entrances on the, what, what does the alley entrance look like then?
So just scroll this.
Physically, but figuratively. I also live in an alley, which when I say that, people try to offer me. With buildings that like face the alley, it does change how people take care of the alley, which is really amazing. And so I'm thinking about that as well as like, this is obviously like the backside of the building. Um, and I think you can still have parking there and still make it feel activated. Cause it, it does make a huge, huge difference. Uh, my alley is like one of the cleanest just because we have three structures facing, facing it. Um, because people are there.
So these are, um, this is the backside of some one bedroom and studio apartments. Um, we've considered putting some windows in there. But we expect that the lights will be on in the parking. And you don't want the lights shining all night in there. I mean, there might be a night lighting set, setting, you know, for safety, just for safety.
And then can people just walk in from, from Adam Street and they just, is there a gate on that side?
Yeah. So you'd walk into, you'd walk into the Leslie's garden gate.
Okay, so there's gates on all sides.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think my, my, sort of really the only like big thing that's, uh, two big things that jumped out at me was, was definitely. Covered in sort of the, that complicated question of like how this private space relates to the public space. And I don't really have a great. Question or point to you. It's really just more of it, it just doesn't, it doesn't sit fully well with me and I. Honestly, I'm, I'm going to have to like think about it more to like figure out why that's not. But then my, my, my second more specific comment and question is, is. You know, are, are these garage spaces understood to be able to function as not garage spaces as? Other kind of like what could there, what should there be? Other things that, that could happen there?
You could absolutely decide to have an alley festival or an alley. Action of some sort and we could mural that wall. Yeah, that would be up to the, to the residents because there's only fourteen spaces. Those will probably go by lottery to the condo owners. So it'll change, it'll revolve. Can you go back to perspective two? Keep going, keep going. The next one. There we go. So, but Leslie's garden will, will become a private space. Right? So that'll no longer be just anybody walks in, but you'll have a key to the gate. And there's actually with mist, that, that fence comes across here as well. So it's a, now from courtyard to street park. And there's also some green space behind school ten and there'll, there'll be a little gated area there. And again, the tenants or the owners will decide what area might be a kitty place or a dog place.
So if I was visiting someone there, how would I, um, get to them?
You would probably go to, uh, the second street walkthrough and have a doorbell. Intercom to them.
And that would be for that whole building? With all the apartment numbers on it?
Right, and for both buildings actually, because you'd go through there into the courtyard and get in. Okay, to the other. Apartments too. So you'd probably stop here somewhere and you'd go in. I guess we have to set that gate back and get some, uh, intercom systems in there. Good point.
And then you'd have the lighting.
Yeah.
Come in through here and then you access.
Now we're going to have some fun with the landscape design. So we would be back. Not in. August because we can't meet that. July thirty deadline. Cause our surveyors are just getting their work done based on some plans we've been able to get from Russ's office. Um, so it'll be September before we're here for site plan. Yes, that we can do, that we can do.
I think when Stephen was talking about why, why does it feel odd? Like I, my thought is I, I. Get Roddy's point about traveling and seeing other places with great courtyards and stuff, but the reality is in sure we have so few public spaces and I. Think it's great that there's some private courtyard space, but I also think there's probably a way to. Gradually make that transition. So potentially that is on the Adam Street side. And then you get, as you get closer to the structures, it becomes more private and there's a gate or something like that, but. I think there's a way to kind of have both because right now it's very private. And I really like the, a lot of elements of it. I think like on second street, like those structures look. Amazing and they seem to function really simply seamlessly into the rest of the community, but. Think there is something about like popping this down in this neighborhood. Yeah, that, that could be thought through a little bit differently. I also think that. Like I said earlier, the alley integration is still a little confusing to me. If you were to park. In a designated spot that you just have access to and then you're not able to access your unit. Would you be walking?
Oh, sure. Yeah, you'd just, you'd come through, go back to the site plan.
So there are entrances on the alley.
Yeah. So. If you park back here, you come through this. Um, I, I don't want to call it a tunnel, but it's a.
Corridor.
Corridor, um, through the building. Um, also, if you live in school ten and you want to come through and garden in the raised beds. You come just across the alley and, and through here and you use your key.
But there's no entrance.
There's no unit entrances on the face of the alley.
Right. So if you have a parking space, like there's one vehicle shown. On the site plan, if you park there and your apartment is directly south of that. Or sorry, directly west of that. So you'd have to go all the way around.
Yeah. It's a three foot change from the alley. Elevation to the first floor of the, so you'd have to have stoops and stairs and all of that and. As you can imagine, all the bathrooms and kitchens back and all the living rooms and bedrooms are. Utilizing the windows from the courtyard. But if you, uh, if you live here, you park there, you come through and you're in. And our, our TDMP shows, uh, it does qualify all of the. Parking, it's basically a full, well, half of a city block there.
Yeah, and Adams is always, there's such underutilized street parking on Adams.
Yeah, so half the people park. Fourteen people park and on site and sixteen people don't. Or don't have cars.
We have a, a space here which will be, um, bike storage and especially for. E-bikes, because we don't want e-bikes in the buildings. I learned that fire department does not like. E-chargers, you know, car chargers underneath a structure. So that's kind of a challenge. I'm not sure what we're going to do there. And this, you know, this will also be a public, private. Um, it may be pop-up restaurant, cafe, it might be a place for tenant or homeowner meetings and things like that. So. Um, you know, maybe this is the opportunity to have maybe that part of it be more public and.
I also, I'm, I'm noticing and reflecting on us focusing on this part of it. And we barely are talking about the school part of this. I'm not sure, just not knowing much about that part of the project, if that should be separated out as its own. As its own bit, perhaps there, we, we'd get to a point where. Either one could go sooner than the other action wise, you know what I mean? Just thinking of timeliness for you to go through the process.
Financing is all together. So they want to see that we've got our approvals marching along. Whether that's going to remain rentals or become condos as part of this whole. Project. Is yet to be seen because we have to bring those tenants up to become homeowners. But one way or the other, the, the building will be renovated as well. So. We're still just starting conversations with the tenants.
Is there more to talk about there then? Uh, like for instance, you mentioned the greens, just scroll up there. Just a little bit so we can see the schools, uh, other way. There we go, yeah. Nope, too much. Just looking to see the school. Yep, there, right there.
So this all exists. When we put an elevator in, it'll go into this stairwell and it'll eat up a couple of bedrooms on the upper floors. Uh, but this space here exists as green space, which is private to the tenants. There's an entrance here with stairs. We'll have to add a ramp here to get into the elevator lobby, but other way, other than that. Um, it's just kitchen replacements and. Mechanicals, system replacements.
Interior to the building, really not our. Cup, you know, our, our area, but, um, exterior. And site plan wise, looks like just some other green space changes around the building then. Okay.
Okay.
Is there anything else you think you need from us at this point?
Any questions? No, I, I think we're good.
It's a great start.
Thank you.
I would echo that immediately. This, as Roddy mentioned, the creativity, um, just forward thinking and. What we've seen is, is pretty excellent.
Just what everybody has on every street in South.
Thoughtful design. It's very thoughtful. So thank you for that.
All right.
Um, so you don't need us to ta, do we need to table indefinite or? You'll re-approach city staff or when you want to come back?
To you.
Yeah, you can just, you can just let me know when you want to jump on the agenda.
I, we have had a workshop session, uh, with city engineer and codes and we've already gotten a good deal of. Um, inputs. We, uh, do have soil borings to do. We have submitted preliminary. Schematic. Soils information and stuff like that.
And so do we need a motion to dismiss here or can we just table it or do we not need a motion at all to move on from this? My understanding is this is just a sketch plan, that's right. So I don't think we need a motion at all. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We really do need, you really need.
Okay, uh, the next item.
It's just that things. I guess it's alleys. I like living, but I mean, things happen in alleys and it's good to be able to jump out your door and say, hey, don't do that. What are you doing?
There's not, it did, there's no ingress. I don't understand.
But still like.
Rick, so this is fifteenth.
Good evening, team. Uh, do you plan to load any presentation up or anything? Okay, gotcha.
So I'll introduce myself. Um, I'm Andy Donovan, uh, with Andrew J. Donovan, P E P C. I'm representing the owner at twenty-four, twelve, fifteenth street. Just off of Huzick. And what we've got is we've got an existing building. Um, it's been vacant for five, maybe five plus years. The owner contacted me earlier this year, um, to. Try to get this back to an active use, commercial use. Um, we spent, I think we were in the April hearing. Um, with the Z B A, uh, our, our first step was to get this, um, that back to where we could actually use it as commercial use. Because it was zoned single family. When we, when we look at this building, eh, there was a point in time when it was most likely a residence. Um, sometime in a number of years ago, it started, there started to be commercial use coming out of it. And. This is our second step now. The zoning board of appeals granted the variant, the use variance to, uh, to, for commercial use. Um, pending the approval from planning commission. So. What I'm going to ask Eric to pull up is, um, do we can just start with the front?
I'm, I'm also going to ask you to forgive us because I, I can't, um, access the shared folder, which would allow me to rotate the image. So, uh, if, if you want to, I've got. Um, if you want, rather than this particular image, I can pull up, uh, a, a Google Maps. Profile view if you're trying to do an elevation view.
Eric, if you hit the download on this file and then open it in your own PDF viewer. You should be able to. What do you have for a PDF viewer?
Like, do you use? This isn't, this, I only use this laptop or. I don't know that I even have all the full.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. And also we all have it on our machines.
I think the Google Drive thing would be fine. I mean, uh, street view.
Forgive me for that.
So this is, this is the building that we had to work with. Um, this lot is a hundred feet by a hundred feet. Um, so we've got a hundred foot frontage on fifteenth street. If we're looking at the front of this building, we can see the back of the, um, one of the buildings on, um, on Huzick Street. So we're in very close proximity to Huzick. So when we first started talking about this and I've had conversations with Eric with regard to what we're, what we have to work with. Over the years, um, you, you could see that the pavement was brought right down to curb, right down to fifteenth street. And anybody who went into, uh, in the past, it being a spa, most recently being a spa, which closed five years ago. Um, people just pull in off of fifteenth street. So in order to clean up the site a little bit, we've talked about. Creating, um. a, a drive. And in this case, um, what looks like the most reasonable is one way in on the on the south side, one way in around, and then one way out on the north side of the, of the, of the lot. The pavement, the expansive pavement is pretty much the full one hundred foot width, maybe ninety or ninety-five foot width of frontage. Um, the curb to the front of the building is approximately thirty-seven feet. So in our, the proposed site plan, we are looking to remove blacktop um, from curb, the first three feet and recreate green space in that. So, and then the existing concrete sidewalk, um, conditions, we have a little bit of an idea, but conditions are generally unknown right now because the blacktop is still covering it. Um, it's the fi, the five-foot concrete sidewalk. So by the time we get from that five-foot concrete sidewalk to the building, we only have about thirty feet to work with. So trying to clean up the site, make a more manageable traffic pattern for anybody coming to that site really limits the amount of parking that we have. So in this layout, we probably, we've only got about two spot, two spaces on site. Um, everything else would have to be, um, on, on the street. Now, I know in the complete streets form, um, and it was noted in the, in the staff report, um, I left those items blank simply because it's not a, it's, 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 I will have at the next hearing, I will have better numbers as to employees. Um, the spa itself, there's only about three rooms, three spa-type rooms in the one section of the, of the, uh, the building. Other, the, the other end of the building will be a takeout service food establishment. Um, and it'll just be the owner running his little takeout out of that space. So we're anticipating about four employees and then of course customers for the spa and anybody coming up for a takeaway. But given the site constraints that we already have, it's virtually impossible to create off-street parking, relying on that.
So I'm looking at the Google Street View.
Yep.
And I'm looking, it looks like between two thousand and seven and twenty eleven is when it was transitioned from a residence to a commercial. And then between twenty eleven and twenty fifteen, so in twenty, twenty eleven, there was just this six or seven parking spaces on one side. Have you seen this?
No.
Okay, um.
He's in Earth instead of Maps.
And then later on, they, they blacktopped the whole thing. And if you just had parking on one side, on maybe that right side where the bollards are, you could fit in four parking space. I'm not trying to design it for you, but you could fit maybe four parking spaces in them.
I, I, I did, so we're talking about. I can, so we're talking about parking, uh, vehicles facing north, south or east, west? There's no facing.
They'd be facing north, south.
North, south. Um, and that's what, what we have is by the time we get to the sidewalk, we've only got about thirty feet left. So the best we could do is squeeze three spaces into there.
Um, I don't really care about how many parking spaces you fit in, to be honest.
Yeah.
Uh, it is just, you would only have one curb cut. Seems a little bit more natural and, and I mean, we can, maybe Eric can pull this up or you can look at it.
Open, uh, maps dot google dot com instead of Earth.
Um, but anyway, I, it, I guess the site plan changes, uh, are an improvement. Essentially, you know, we look, we look for the, some of the things that you've done already. Reducing that ridiculous, uh, curb code is a great start. So if you just go to the, um, Seymour dates.
Oh, okay.
And collapse the ribbon on the left. Yeah, down a little bit. Uh, arrow, the tab on the side of it with the little arrow pointing, no.
No, 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 no.
You were close. Keep going right, right?
Just to expand.
This one, yeah, yeah.
Sorry about that. So if you just go down to twenty eleven on the bottom right.
I did not know about.
Neither did I. James just taught me that.
No.
I didn't know this existed. It's, it's an incredible.
I don't know how anyone did in planning before map. Anyway, so, so something like this, you know, obviously we don't want to see parking spaces on, on the sidewalk. Um, and I am not an engineer, so I don't know about, you know.
You definitely don't want that.
These spaces adapt to the building.
Yeah, but it looks like.
Six total, right?
What, doesn't look wide enough? The aisle? Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you could, you could, um, push the aisle further north and then have the walkway further north as well.
Yeah.
Anyway, something like that would, would just create one curb cut. Um, and I think, you know, we could talk about other, other site improvements as well if you, you'd like, but, okay. Um, and again, I'm also, if, if you want to try to move forward with your design, I'm not trying to redesign it for you. I'm just saying that it's interesting to see that this happened already and it maybe works. I don't know.
Yeah, I'd have to look at, again, with that aisle with cars being able to move, maneuver and swing around and come out again. Like the ones, spots up by the building are almost unusable because I don't know how they get out of there. So it's, uh, I, I, I actually did a couple different iterations and kept throwing sheets of paper away and said, okay, I'll, I'll try with this to at least create a comfortable flow and be able to get a little more green into the area.
Okay.
But I'll definitely take a look at it.
Do you want to go back to your site plan then and?
Sure.
Sorry for the detour.
Was there a number of required off-street spaces for this?
No.
There's a number of off-street parking spaces that trigger, um, a transportation demand management plan. If you accumulate enough, but not a mandatory.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's kind of one of these, uh, I, I agree with James that, you know, trying, i- if it's possible to get down to one curb cut, that would be amazing, but if not, like, then I would, yeah, I would try to focus on trying to make this as safe as possible, which, you know, possibly is, is, is something with parallel spaces or something along those lines that are, that would maybe facilitate the deliveries or whatever um, that might happen. Um, but I, I trust that you're, that you're doing the math correctly. So I, I, it's just whatever can be done, not a, you're doing it wrong, like, not at all.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, we're just trying to make sure we, we, you know, but like, I mean, it's already a fairly pedestrian, unfriendly area, so we're trying to improve that as much as we possibly can. So we don't have those eighteen millimeters like parking on them, on the sidewalk.
Like the, like the shop. There, I have, I'm, one of my photographs has, that has a delivery truck sitting there.
Right, like, that's the least appealing option, um, and, and also why re-establishing that curb is critical.
Yeah. Okay. And, uh, similar to the, some of the other projects you heard us talk about tonight, you know, we'd like to see that concrete sidewalks across the, uh, driving entrance, the entrance to Newgrass.
And, and I think when I, when I did my plan, when I first got it laid out, not knowing what that concrete was going to look like when it came up, um, thinking that we might have to rebuild the sidewalks, um, I had cut the sidewalk out at the drive-throughs and in subsequent conversations, we'll continue that, that through there.
Great.
Um.
I'm guessing it'll need to actually be replaced. It doesn't look like it was in a great condition.
Especially those eighteen.
Yeah, and it definitely wasn't the appropriate width.
Twenty fifteen.
Yeah. Just great. It, it, because it is, you know, now that the rag is below the land, you know, having that minimum four feet and preferably wider than that.
It is actually five.
Perfect, all right. Left is right. Wide is better.
Yeah. So a question I had about the curbing. I, I've, I've heard it. I, I get it. I understand it. Um, economically, it adds to the owner's costs. Um, this is, this is, um, not in, uh, the hardship is mostly self-created in this case probably because they were operating, it's the same, same owner um, that did this. But I was hoping to have a discussion if we left the curb where it is, which is consistent with that end of fifteenth street. Um, as a matter of fact, that's, that's shot down on the, the bottom actually has fresher blacktop over the top and they come right to that curb. They drive over the curb. So they also have one big curb cut. I was hoping that if we could have a discussion about creating the green, the green strip along that front and either cleaning up or replacing sidewalk. Is, is it that important to raise the curbing on the front of this building?
Well, either to the transportation.
I would say yes. I mean, it's, it's busy roadway, high-volume roadway, urban environment.
Ross, I, I, my, my feeling is, and, and James, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to
Yeah.
interject myself. I, I, but I did, I guess. I, I'm sorry. You know, Andy, my thought is, why don't we, let's check that out together.
Okay.
In the field.
I could do that.
Would that be reasonable if we check it out?
I mean, you could check it out. I don't think you're going to change my mind, but I feel pretty strongly about, about.
Well, that's okay. That's all right.
Allowing dilapidated infrastructure.
No, I understood. I think.
After destroying it ten years prior.
Yeah.
We, we paid, we kept building up the pavement. We never milled it also, you know, but I just, my thought is, you know, if the applicant's requesting it, it probably doesn't hurt as a courtesy just to go out in the field and check this out together. And maybe report back to the board. Not that that would change your mind, but I think the fact that the applicant made the request, I respect it. So we meet in the field and check this out.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't mean to be harsh or whatever.
No, 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 not taking it as.
So, and I, you know, I read the staff report and I've read the recommendations and there's really only two things that I, I was going to want to discuss about it, other than we will take, we will do pretty much everything that we need to.
Yeah.
It was the curb and, um, fire department access. Yes.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, we know it's not a, we know it's not cheap, but.
I will say this, uh, what we've done in the past, and just a thought, Andy, what we did in the past, and again, it is cost-driven, but we've, we've raised curb before, you know, if it can be reused. Uh, we did that on Spring Avenue, if I may say. Uh, so my thought is, why don't we meet in the field?
Okay.
Yeah.
I could do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, a hundred feet is a long way for a pedestrian. One would feel very nervous walking there, especially as a pedestrian. I don't drive. You know, we know that.
I'm wondering if one option is to raise that curb. I wonder if that's a possibility.
That's what we're.
Well, that's, that's, I think that's what the discussion is, not necessarily a replacement, but, but raising that.
Oh, yeah, sure. If it's in good shape and you can.
Sure, that's where it is at.
Yeah, like you said, I, I, I'm, I'm just here to ask. I'm not here to, uh, you know, say, please help us out. Um, but, uh, you know, if, if, if we, if we could do something other than raising it and putting that expense on, on, on the owner, um, everything else we can discuss in here and then get it done. Um, except that as we look at it, we look at this fire department, I don't believe the fire department is going to want to, need to access this site. Um, so any kind of, uh, curb cut, single curb cut that we do, um, I, I don't see them, I don't see them utilizing it except maybe to drive it face up, but it, it was designed, it's, it's, uh, it was a house and generally fire department would have, would fight a fire in this case, if it was a house, from the road.
Right.
They'd attack it from the road. So given the, given the conditions of the site, trying to maneuver a, a fire engine onto that through a, you know, a, with a turn radius and so forth, wouldn't work with this. You don't agree?
Yeah, I know, I would agree. I would agree, yeah.
I mean, I, I mean, I'm struggling to like find ideas, but it, it's, and I don't know that this would be better, but I mean, if the, if the sidewalk itself is raised, which again, I don't know that we've solved anything, but like, if the sidewalk itself does raise, I think that would lessen. It, it's still not, in my, in my, in my opinion, it's not a good thing to leave the, the, the
curb.
The curb down, but it, it would be better. But I, I don't know that we've solved anything if we're.
I think we're getting singer around this. The curb needs to come up. The curb needs to come up. There's a drainage issue, there's a safety issue that, there's myriad reasons. Yeah, we want to be sensitive, but it, it has to be done.
Don't you need the curb up, straight up the street then? You're going to have low curb, high curb.
We can only, we can only look at one parcel of.
But I'm just talking about what makes it safe. Having irregular curb height isn't, it doesn't sound safe to me. It sounds like it's an invitation for someone in the dark to fall off.
I, I think I would like to just, that's a well said, Bill. I, but I think it might be beneficial to go in the field and just take a quick look at what we have. That's a great point, though. I mean, the rest of the curb in the area is also at the same profile. That's well said.
Typically how curbs end up getting raised is.
Right.
One, one project at a time, though.
Yeah, I will say that. I, I do als, I have traveled this for, or, I don't know, fifty times in the last winter.
Goes right up to free.
The YMCA is right there, your park is right there. So.
Yep.
The one last point away from the curb is, you know, they might want to very clearly delineate the businesses because I think, um, I've heard comments from other people who have mentioned not wanting to eat at the foot spa. Just a, just a, aside, not, uh, something I think that I would consider in any of our site plan decisions, but just a word of advice.
Yeah, no, the, the. Food establishment will be in the garage. So you're going to get your food out of the garage.
Um, so will we expect you to come back then?
I, I can't.
Yeah, they have to. We have a two-step process in this. So we have to declare the application complete today if we're, if, if we're so inclined.
I think you have a, a bit of work ahead of you. Um, but I think you're on the right track. I mean.
I'm prepared to call the application complete.
Right.
Um, but we can't take any further action anyways.
Yeah, remember that they can have the components of an application, that components can themselves be insufficient.
Right.
Um, but so long as they do have those boxes checked, then.
No.
I'll make a motion to declare it.
Second, thank you. Moving to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I as well.
I'll make the motion to table the project.
Until.
Uh, can, i- if I were to pull this together in the next three weeks, um, can I get on August or is it, is it too late for August?
I'll, I'll just give you the deadline dates.
Twenty seventh.
The, uh, August twenty-first meeting's deadline, uh, would be, uh, July thirtieth.
Yep, that's what I saw.
Would be, uh, what's that? Um, almost thirteen days from now.
Yeah.
So.
I got, I got a couple of weeks. It, it's to pull it together.
Would that be sufficient?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll table it for the next, next month's meeting.
Yep.
There was motion.
Uh, yeah, that's a, a motion.
Second. Moving to a vote. All in favor?
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Okay, uh, last but not least, E L P C twenty twenty four zero zero two nine, two hundred Broadway. Familiar face.
Well, well, well.
Good evening.
You taught me. Interview, swear, and I missed it, hiding at the bottom.
Nice to see you all. Andy Brick, uh, the Brick Firm. Uh, with me is Kelsey Carr from Labella, Larry Novick from the property owner. Uh, the request is for, uh, change of use for a portion of the Hendrick Hudson Building at two hundred Broadway. Uh, currently it's first floor retail, second, third and fourth floor are apartments and fifth, sixth and seventh floor were offices rented by the Attorney General's Office and they moved out about a year ago. And fifth, sixth, and seventh floor were offices rented by the Attorney General's Office and they moved out about a year ago. Um, seeking new office tenants has, has been a struggle for the client, so uh they notice a, a, a. A need for apartments, so uh they're now proposing to convert the fifth, sixth, and seventh floor into apartments. Mirror images of two, three, and four, um, so it's the same floor plans, it's all internal. There will be no exterior changes, there will be no marquee, no electronic messages, and our curbs are fine. Um, we. We, we, we're here this evening uh simply to uh ask you to consider that the application is complete. We've filed the application, full EAF, floor plans, uh, traffic demand, uh, management plan, complete, complete streets. Uh, by the way, this conversion results in less traffic and less parking demand, so all the numbers are going in the right direction. Um, and we also received a copy of the staff report. Uh, which is recommending a Knox box, which is no problem, we can agree to, I was surprised there isn't one there now. And flow calculations, uh, we did provide our wastewater and water flow calculations in the EAF, it's thirty-nine. Sixty gallons a day, uh, which is somewhat of an increase from the office because of the, you know, it's, it's the daily living, it's the showers. So it, it does go up a little bit, um, but it's thirty-nine sixty, well within the city's capacity. And um, we weren't sure if the flow calculation request was for a fire flow, but the building is fully split, so we just did want to put that out there. Recognize that you have a two-step process, so we're just asking you to declare it complete this evening. And like I said, I have K- Kelsey here to answer any of the tough questions.
I don't know, maybe we should make a motion to adjourn.
Um, so the application was actually above me on what's new for the type two, correct? I mean, that was my read of it, you, you did the long form, basically.
We did the long form, it's a historic structure, uh, so it's a type one action, so we did do the long.
Actually, actually, I reviewed this, you know, I found it to be a type two action. Um, we, you know, we, we looked at it as a type two action within the historic district, which, you know. Didn't trigger type one status unless it was unlisted.
I, I, I don't disagree with that, I'm simply saying we, we did the full EAF.
Yeah.
Because it was a historic structure.
Yeah.
That, that's what generated.
Got you. Um, could you just speak a little bit now with uh kind of a different occupancy here or a different use really? Um, to, to really waste streams and how that's being accounted for? That's one thing I didn't, didn't see much of, basically, there's a lot more trash being generated when people are living there than just office space.
Yeah, and.
Does it change anything for you about what you need to do with dumpsters, recycling?
No, I, I don't think so, I mean, we, we have the system in place now, um, it's a little easier now with the three floors empty, but, you know, we had it. When it was fully operational with the three office floors as well, three residential floors and the retail, so we don't see any significant change to our current system.
Okay. Uh, other commissioner comments, questions?
I have a question. Um, so the parking study you did focused on daytime use and when you said the numbers are all going in the, in the, in the right direction. But the numbers, you didn't have any study of what the numbers will look like at night, what you have is a different use of the building. You have people who are going to be staying there overnight and parking overnight to the extent they have cars. It's so, it's not so much daytime parking that you need to look at, it's what, what happens when you have another, I don't know. Thirty-six beds, thirty cars potentially adding to this tight area where there's not a lot of parking. That was, that's what went through my mind. And, and we can supplement our, our management plan with, with that analysis.
Uh, does anyone have any concerns about completeness?
Kelsey, did you have something about to say?
I could just add a little bit more detail to that, so our, our parking numbers are based on the IT standard industry data, um, and so. In IT, they offer basically two ti- different types of data, average versus fitted curve. And typically, when you have more than twenty studies available, they actually want you to use the fitted curve, they say that that's more accurate. And in this case, there were over forty-something studies available for multifamily market rate housing. Um, and so the numbers that are in the, the plan show that the part, that the. Market rate apartments are only going to generate, what was it? Ten, um, a parking demand of ten. Um, and so I think in, in that case, because of downtown and how the parking is restricted only during the day. Um, people could find on-street parking and surrounding streets.
And just while I have you, could you just speak a little bit more about the, the, basically table six, that, that is understanding. The, the, the ideas that this, these numbers are understood to be on-street parking. Is that what we're, what we're saying?
Yes, so, because there is no off-street parking available on the property because it's only building.
Right.
Um, so, yes, they, the demand would have to be occupied with on-street parking.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, Mr. Chairman, can I?
Sure.
You know, thi- this is uh. You know, the, the city is very interested in having you occupy the building and the building being successful, for darn sure. Uh. One of the things I think that we're going to request, just as.
Russ, just make sure you got the mic.
I'm sorry, thank you. How's that? Thank you.
Yeah, it's when you turn away from it.
Yeah, yeah. I did that on purpose, just to make sure you're paying attention. O- one of the things, you know, we're, we're, we want to see all these buildings occupied for Crane Outland and, and be successful. Uh, as a precautionary measure, uh, this was a hotel years ago. Hendrick Hudson Hotel, and I remember as a kid getting a haircut with my father in there twenty years ago, maybe it was a little bit longer. But um. As a precautionary measure, we, we just are going to do, have you do a quick flow analysis and, and we had, we arranged that. In Department of Public Utilities, uh, CDM Smith has prepared a mathematical model. Uh, for our sanitary, for our sanitary flows. Down there is a combined sewer and. That's just done as a, a, as a precautionary measure and it, it, it helps us see. Do we need to do any mitigation?
What's that?
Well, yeah, if, if, if there's a little hiccup with that, uh, uh, what, what the council was mentioning. There's a little bit of a, shall I use the word mitigation effort, where. Down the road, the city may do a little bit of separation, I don't really see it too much as an issue here. Because the number of units really is not that much, your sanitary loading isn't that much in relation to. What we do here, we have a hundred and fifty miles of sewer that we got to worry about, this is just a little, you know, tiny piece of it. So, but, but it's just something that we need to go through, that's all, and we'll shepherd that with you, we'll, we'll, we'll shepherd that with you.
Yeah, so basically where we're going to end up, with, with the existing versus the proposed uses, it's going to be an increase of roughly two thousand four hundred and sixty gallons per day. So it, it's a relatively small increase.
It is.
Um, and we're, we're certainly open to you guys doing that analysis, but what is the timing of that right now for them to leave that?
Well, I'll, we'll, we'll find that, we'll, we'll find that. Um, also as part of this, because of the height of the building, I have you do just a, 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 a fire flow. Analysis, okay, now you're, the sprinklers company can do that for you. I think that's in the staff report.
Rick, was there? That needs to be wanted to share.
Uh, Russ, Russ just stole my founders.
He's on a little bit, right?
Does anybody have any uh thoughts on completeness, issues with completeness, seems pretty complete to me?
I just have one little question. Um, when you did that traffic study, uh, did you do an evening traffic study or overnight?
You mean for the parking or?
Yeah, for parking.
No, we did not.
Because there's nothing but restaurants there and I'm just wondering how much parking there really is on Broadway.
I mean, the residents are choosing to live in a city, I think they're willing to walk, maybe a few blocks if they need to. It's my thought.
I was just wondering, you know, people who live places tend to crab if they don't have a parking space near them and I'm just wondering. Um, you know, I understand you can't park in front of your building, but I was just wondering, because uh. There are so many restaurants right there, you know, Bootleggers and, and Vic Christopher and all those other. Uh, establishments, so was just wondering.
Yeah, I mean, it, I, I think I gave my thoughts, I, I think if people are, are willing to walk a few blocks if they have to, kind of parking space.
Okay.
Um, so I'm making a motion to declare the application complete.
Second, moving to a vote, all in favor?
Okay, um, Kelsey will contact Russ's office first thing in the morning, we'll get working on the fire flow and the. Capacity analysis and uh we'd like to possibly be tabled to next month's meeting, we'll be right back.
I'll make a motion to table this for next month's meeting.
Second, moving to a vote, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, nice to see you all.
I'll make a motion to, oh, does anybody want to chat about anything else?
Um, did we, we did our referrals, did referrals?
Oh, um, well, maybe futile, but. Uh, it has been over a year and a half since I was elected as chair. Um, so if there is a next meeting, let's plan to do another election. You're supposed to do an election every year, I just happened to notice when I went through thirty-seven months of minutes when that happened. Well, thirty-seven months ago is when I started. Well, it's, I think September of twenty-two. Does my executive secretary? Okay.
So, go ahead, go, what was that? Can you use the mic?
Okay, I, I have something if uh, if we could. Hey, gentleman over there, just to interrupt you, well, just before we close out the meeting, you know, obviously, we're all uh. In a very strange situation as a commission and I uh often ask for feedback from specifically the council, but. You know, looking at that, the um memo that was put out by, by. The city's Corporation Council and describing that we're not operating within our purview, I just wanted to get some feedback from you, Rick. Do you, is that your, your opinion as well, or we, uh, did we do an okay job tonight? Um, are we, are we doing something wrong?
I thought tonight was excellent.
But uh.
I thought you were pretty on task.
You, could you say that into the microphone?
Yeah.
I thought you were excellent tonight, I thought you were all on task.
So, so I have a follow-up on that, assuming that they.
So let, you.
I, I, I wouldn't mind that, that, I'll close the meeting. You want to be on the record?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
This doesn't have anything to do with your functions.
It doesn't.
Would you like me to?
Motion's been seconded, um, so moving to a vote, all in favor of adjourning? I, thank you.